Is that Kelly? Okay, all right, we'll begin the meeting. Six thirty, what is it, thirty?
Three.
Three.
Thirty-three. Okay, um, so let's just... Um, uh, so I think we have two personnel matters for, um, executive tonight.
I have one.
Okay, yeah, I do as well. All right.
Accounting for one.
Um, and zoning. Any, um, any need to amend the agenda?
Uh, yes, I have, um, two additional items. One under old business. The board might want to review the pending Kendall Hill Road solar project now that the planning commission has, um, made their voice heard on that proposal. And under new business, um, we have possible consideration of, um, signing off on water system study, one-hundred percent forgivable loan documents.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for executive session and for the agendas amended.
Second, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I think, uh, because Roman is very small...
No, we need a motion, okay.
We just...
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, you're right. One motion. Yep, okay.
So we'll skip the, uh, rest of our admin, we'll not skip it, we'll leave our, the rest of our administration section for later, and old business, and go right into new business. Um, and, um, so, and do we have...
They're here.
They are here.
Yes.
Okay, um, so yeah, let's go right into, uh, Castleton's Wind Turbine Project Proposal.
Mr. Carlson, are you with us?
They just walked through.
Oh, okay.
Well, David Blitterstorch just walked through, so if you, somebody goes out and reels them in, please.
Uh, yeah. Thank you. Mr. Carlson, please come on in. Looks like pretty much all the seats are spoken for, but we've pulled you to the top of the list because so many people are interested in what you have to say.
Okay.
Before they start, can I just ask, are you going to allow public comment after this presentation or before?
I think we'll let them present, and then we'll take public comment.
John, did they get the one-page?
Yes.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to, uh, present myself, my name is Sam Carlson. Community relations. Grandpa's Knob Community Win.
Okay, thank you.
So I appreciate the opportunity to...
Um, pardon me, are we having a problem maybe with the camera? You're right in front of the camera, I'm sorry.
Is there AED maybe there's?
Yes, over here.
Okay, I can go over in that back corner.
Yeah, don't be bashful.
So, good evening, my name is Sam Carlson. I'm, uh, responsible for community relations for Grandpa's Knob Community Win Project. Uh, I'd like to just sort of spend about five minutes, uh, letting you know about the project, highlighting a few key points, and, and then, uh, here to answer any questions you might have about the project. First off, just a little bit of history, if you looked at your one-pager, you realize that what this project is about is honoring the history of Grandpa's Knob, which in nineteen forty-one, eighty years ago, was the first wind energy turbine to be connected into the grid in the country, in the world, which is a pretty amazing thing that I think very few people actually know. And we think that that is something that is going to become even more important in the decades ahead, as wind energy itself, all around the world, and in the country, and elsewhere, uh, we realize how important wind energy is for the environment, for sustainable renewable energy going forward. So, this project is about honoring that history and that legacy of Palmer Putnam eighty years ago. Let's be very clear what this project is not. This project is not the project that nine years ago, I'm sure folks in this room and folks in the surrounding towns fought very hard to make sure it didn't happen. That was a twenty turbine project going along seven miles of ridgeline. This is a single, a single turbine, 1.5 megawatts. The tower height of this turbine is approximately the same height as the communications tower that is on Grandpa's Knob right now. There is already a road, a truck-ready road that goes to the top of Grandpa's Knob, there is, uh, there are already power lines that go up to the top of Grandpa's Knob. Grandpa's Knob is already a developed, or will even disturbed area. We don't have to build a road, we don't have to cut down a whole bunch of trees, we don't have to, uh, take up power lines. This is a single turbine. There is very, very little environmental impact of a single turbine project where you've already got a road there, you've already got the power lines. Okay? So, where did this turbine, what's, what's the relationship here in terms of the permitting process and, and our relationships with the, the state of Vermont? So last week, the state of Vermont's Renewable Energy Program, called the Standard Offer Program, made an award in their wind technology block for a 1.5-megawatt project. That standard offer contract basically stipulates a rate at which Green Mountain Power will purchase that electricity for the next twenty years. That is not permitting. I want to be really, really clear here. We are not in the permitting phase. Permitting is probably nine months away, twelve months away. As soon as we knew that we were likely to get this standard offer award, the very first thing we did was reach out to the surrounding towns. I met last week with the Castleton Select Board, with the Hubbardton Select Board, meeting with you tonight. I'll be in West Rutland on Monday night, hope to see anyone who wants to be there. I'll be at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the nineteenth, I'll be in the town of Proctor on the twenty-fifth, and I'll probably be back with the Castleton Select Board on the twenty-fifth as well. Our desire is to make this a community wind project. This is not a, this is not a money-making project. You don't make a whole lot of money on a single wind turbine, you just don't. All the costs that go into permitting, all the costs that go into, uh, the legal work, that everything, a single turbine, you don't do that if, if your objective is to be a commercial wind project, or an industrial wind project. This is about honoring the history of Grandpa's Knob. What we would like to discuss with the Select Board here in Pittsburgh, with the Select Boards of the surrounding towns, is what does that mean to make this a community wind project? How do we share the benefits that come from this wind project? The profits that come from this wind project? How do we share those with the surrounding towns so that you ultimately say that the benefits of this project outweigh the costs? Right? You're going to make that decision yourself, that the benefits of the project outweigh the costs or not. What are really the costs of this project? The costs of this project are really the fact that some folks, depending on where you are, in a five-mile radius or a ten-mile radius, they're going to see a turbine going around. Some folks, they only see the top bit, right, from more from the Pittsburgh, Proctor, West Rutland, and we're going to be doing all those visual analyses, and as those visual analyses, assessments become available, they're going to be available to you, that they're going to be up on a website that other people can look at and see for themselves what is the visual impact of this single turbine. We're not going to be hiding anything, we're going to be honest, we're going to be transparent, you're going to be working with the same information that we have about the visual impact of this project. Beyond the visual impact of this project, what are the costs? And I'm interested in hearing your questions, I'm happy to engage with people here tonight, what are their perceived costs of this project beyond seeing a single turbine going around? We know from the brief visual impact analysis we've done, this is going to hit along Lake Bomaceen, western side of Lake Bomaceen, it's got a clear view, right, right up to Grandpa's Knob. We, we know that coming down Route Seven, as you're just coming into Pittsburgh, right, you can see, you can see the communications tower there now, right? So basically, you want to make your own assessment of what this turbine's going to look like, where is it going to be? There's a three-hundred-and-ten-foot communications tower right now on Grandpa's Knob. The proposed project would install the turbine about a hundred feet lower in elevation to the northwest of the Knob. So, the tower is actually going to be a hundred feet elevation below where the communication tower is. So, uh, the, again, the views from Hubbardton Battlefield, it's going to be a straight, it's three miles away, but it's, it's right there, it's going to be clear view. From Pittsburgh, Proctor, west of this eastern side of the ridgeline, it's going to be, it's going to be partial. But, we're going to share that information with you. Again, I want to come back to the idea that we are trying to engage with all the Select Boards, with the planning commissions. We're happy to have large public meetings in which we can, uh, present all the information about this project, and we want to have a dialogue, and we want it to be based on facts, on information, and let's try to avoid ideology and, and pretending that this project is something that it isn't, this is a single wind turbine, that's what we're proposing.
So what prevents more from being added on if one was to be, to be allowed?
Sure, that's a, that's a, that's a good question, Hubbardton asked, asked the very same question last week. We certainly are willing to stipulate that we're not going to be doing anything else. Right? We can't control every parcel along the ridgeline. The permit for this is a single project, single turbine permit. There, it, it, it would, if someone else wanted to put up turbines on pristine ridgeline where there is no road, where there is no power line, right, they would have to go through their own process that I'm going through now. We certainly are happy to say, all we're interested in doing is a single wind turbine to honor Palmer Putnam. That's, that's why we're doing this. And, again, we are wanting to engage with the towns about how do we share the benefits of this turbine with the towns, so that, again, you perceive that it's going to be in your interest. If, if, if you don't, then you won't.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions?
Where's the money coming from to fund it, is it?
Yep, it's, it's a, this is an entirely Vermont project.
State money?
No, well, it'll be a Vermont bank that we will borrow money from to build the project.
Our tax dollars.
Who gets the tax credit?
No, this is a Vermont bank that we will borrow money from, and we have to pay back the bank. This is, this is not state money. What the state has said is, if you get your project permitted, right, then Green Mountain Power will pay this rate for the next twenty years. That's part of the state's renewable energy program, that's the state's involvement, is financially, is by stipulating what that rate is going to be. And that, that's public knowledge, that's eleven point six cents a kilowatt, which is not.
My question is, is there any other way to honor the memory of Palmer Putnam and his pioneering efforts with his first wind turbine without putting a turbine up on that mountain? Historic marker, things of that nature?
Sure, you, I mean, you could put up a historic marker, um, and there in fact is a historic marker on the top of Grandpa's Knob, which folks who know snow machining up there, or ATVing up there, rightly or wrongly, they may have seen that historic marker at the top of Grandpa's Knob. So, it's there, um, and that's obviously not the most public place that you, you might want to put there. The idea is, is that this is a, if you will, a living monument, that it's operating, it's generating benefits, economic, financial benefits, in addition to clean renewable energy and contributing to Vermont's renewable energy objectives that are stated of what they're trying to do by twenty fifty. And we feel that that's a much more impactful thing to do than to just have a, a marble statue, because this thing will actually be generating money that's going to be shared with the surrounding communities. Now, how that sharing is done is something that needs to be discussed, how that sharing is divided up between the five towns, which of the towns, uh, are primarily impacted? Well, arguably, Castleton and Hubbardton are going to get impacted more than Pittsburgh, Proctor, West Rutland, just because of the visual impact. But that's, that's a discussion that we certainly encourage the Select Boards to have, the planning commissions to have, and as the visual, uh, analyses come forward, you'll be in a better position yourselves to sort of make your own judgments of which towns are affected more, you know, there, there's all kinds of ways to divide up a pie, but we think, pardon the metaphor, but having a pie to divide up is more interesting than having a piece of pie.
Sam, maybe I should jump in at this point, if you will allow me?
Go ahead.
I'm David Blitterstorch, uh, Sam is needing, um, our, our work to inform everybody, but I grew up in Pittsburgh, born in Proctor, um, this all, the reason this is so important to me, at least after being in the wind and solar business for forty-some years, is it goes back to a trip that my dad rented a Alwet snowmobile in nineteen sixty-nine, left our house on Main Street, uh, you know, the old brick house across from the congregation church where I grew up? We took off for a day, we drove in all those old snowmobile trails, went up to the top of the mountain, and I got to see the foundations. So my dad and my mom said, "Go look at these foundations," and gave me the book and all the articles about Grandpa's Knob Wind Turbine. So as a twelve-year-old in nineteen sixty-nine, I've dedicated my life to doing something in wind. I got an engineering degree, so I could actually do something and know how to do it. And this really is, for me, being sixty-four years old, probably the last wind project I'll ever do in my life. And it's so meaningful, because I got started, I understood, we're going to have to use renewables in the future instead of nuclear power and coal, so I spent my life doing this. But the incredible thing for me was, in my start of my engineering career, nineteen eighty-two, I went to a wind conference, my first wind conference, in Cleveland, Ohio, and Palmer Putnam was there, and by chance, me and my chief engineer of my new company, NRG Systems at the time, got to say a few words to Palmer Putnam and shake his hand. It was amazing, and I always remember that. And that's what's driven me in doing all this good stuff for our world. But I just wanted to tell you that personal story, because this is really personal. It's not about making tons of money, and as Sam said, we are looking for a way to give back half of our profits to everybody else, to make it part of the community. Because in Vermont, the laws are such that we can't share the electricity with you, we can't do a lot of things, because the laws they put in place, which we really want to do. So.
David, you had a question?
Yeah, I would just want, how, I'll ask you, David, how big was that original wind tower?
That turbine, um, had a, uh, had seventy-five-foot blade, so it was about a hundred-and-seventy-five feet in diameter, it was on a hundred-and-ten-foot tower. It was rated at 1.25 megawatts, it would hit 1.5 megawatts. So size-wise, the new turbines actually are smaller in the tower, they're nice tubular towers, they're not a truss tower like on that turbine, as you saw on the business card. You know, that, that was a prototype, and it's very similar in size. So that's why this is an ideal site, because the road is workable on the size of components, and the power line is workable, because it's about the same size.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions before we take public comment? Go ahead.
How do you get the tower to stand up? It's three hundred feet tall, does it stand up by itself?
Uh, no, uh, what we have to do is bring in a crane, and the crane has to be high enough to go all the way to, uh, the top of the tower and lift all the components. And the tower comes in four sections, so they're about seventy feet long, they weigh a lot, because they're twelve feet in diameter, uh, and they're steel, but it's a round tubular tower that tapers. So the components, the tower's put together, the nacelle and the generator put on, and then the three-bladed rotor is, is lifted up. So it's all done on-site, and then the crane disappears.
And what about into the ground? How does it stay in the ground?
Uh, there will be, uh, we have to do drilling and core samples to see how good the rock is, it's either embedded rock anchors, or we pour a foundation of concrete.
So you blast into the rock?
What's that?
You blast into the rock to do?
Well, you drill into the rock, you don't blast into it.
I did forget to say to please identify yourselves before you speak for the, that's okay. I was reminded back there. Go ahead. No, no, no.
Okay. Lisa Wright from, uh, West Rutland, I actually live in West Rutland, Whipah Hall Road. Um, I, I have so many questions, and, um, uh, before we get, uh, in the weeds of all the details and the stories about how wind turbines are made, I'd like to bring us back to, I have a script, so that I won't go off it. How many times must our towns say no to industrial wind projects? Before we even have this conversation, we said no back in two thousand and twelve to a larger project. At that time, we reviewed our town plans, and thank you to the Select Board for supporting that and your efforts in that. We, we reviewed our town plans, and all four towns have written protections for our ridgelines and prohibitions against industrial wind into our town plans. Rutland Regional Planning Commission has written a letter to the Public Utilities Commission stating this, and stating that they will intervene against a CPG application for this project. And I have copies of that for everyone on the board, and probably for a few people here as well. Grandpa's Knob Community Wind, community? There's no community in this. This is a project which will absolutely divide our communities, you might as well call it Grandpa's Knob Divided Community Wind, because that is exactly what has happened in any place where these projects have, have been, been put in place. It's presenting an ineffective solution to global warming that will divide our communities and irreparably damage our ridgelines and our quality of life. And they might say it's only one turbine, one turbine for now, but once you've undone those town plans by allowing one turbine there, there is nothing to stop the other nineteen or twenty from coming in next. The developer has stated that they're being transparent, and that they want to work with the communities. The time to have started that was before the developer submitted a bid for the standard offer program. He should not have submitted that bid without doing his homework and speaking to the towns' plan, towns first, without knowing that our town plans prohibited this. This project became known to the public after the standard offer contract was awarded, as Sam has, as, as attested. Did town officials know of this project prior to this date? Did anyone on the Select Board? Or, John, did you get any heads up at this before that? There is a precedent for, uh, the, uh, the Public Utilities Commission not, uh, looking on this favorably, that a, a developer has gone at, to a bid on, and received a contract without doing all the necessary homework ahead of time. So, I'll rest there, but I've got a handouts if, uh, if you mind helping me with those? Yep, there's, there's a summary of what I just said, and this is the letter from the Planning Commission.
Sure.
And I guess maybe I'm a little confused between, do you have a contract, or did they just give you a rate?
When we applied, uh, we did, uh, we did a warning, but it's not a signed contract. We, it's another thirty days away before we actually have a contract. We have nothing...
Just a few extras.
Zero.
So, again, I want to be really clear, right? This is, we're at the very, very beginning of what I'm sure is going to be a long permitting process, right? We don't anticipate filing for a permit for another nine, ten, twelve months, right? This is as upstream as we could be when we found out that, that it was likely that we were going to get the standard offer award. As soon as we knew that, I reached out to John, I reached out to all the other town managers, and got on the agendas for the Select Board. We, to, to come to you before and take up your time to say, "Oh, well, we have this, you know, it's just an idea, but we have no idea if it's worth taking up anybody's time." Now it is worth taking up our time, and we've got lots of time to be talking about the permitting process. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission letter, it, I'm glad you guys have copies of it. I'll be there on the nineteenth, and we'll be having a conversation with the Rutland Planning Commission about this project. What is different about this project is that we are already in a place where there is a road, where there are power lines, where there is a three-hundred-and-ten-foot communications tower, right? This is a sighting of a wind project that we believe is an exception, and obviously that's our, that's our position, is an exception to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission plan, and to, well, I mean, we've obviously read the town plan, we know what the town plans say. We believe that this project is an exception to that, and we want to make that case to you, and either we do or we don't. So, we're urging you to, to sort of withhold your immediate judgment about the project, let the process unfold, and we're not going to be submitting anything for nine to twelve months. As we do the visual analyses, we'll be sharing that information with, as we do the environmental analysis, what's the impact on birds, on bats, on bear migration, on coyote, I don't know, whatever, right? We have to do a full-blown environmental analysis. As we get these analyses done, we're going to be sharing it, you're going to be working with the same information.
Butch?
Thanks, Alicia. I'm looking at the Regional Planning Commission letter, David, September five, they included a, a map of the area, and they have located the, uh, the project within the town, and then I said earlier, though, that you're now taking it off the ridgeline in the west, so which town is it?
It is in Castleton.
It's in Castleton.
And I, I spoke with Ed, the, and he's... And I, I spoke with Ed, and he's, yeah, the map's not lit. It is, it's about five hundred, six hundred feet from the West Rutland border, I think. So if anything, it would be in West Rutland, probably.
But it's in Castleton.
It is in Castleton, the land parcel, the tax ID parcel is in Castleton. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Sandy Mayo, and I was at the top of Fogle Road, and I believe you had these conversations with me eight or ten years ago.
Not with me.
You were someone in your company?
No, different company.
Same plan.
Nope.
Doesn't matter. I, I know this might not mean much to everybody, but I just spent a whole day over the weekend over BINS, which is the Vermont National Science Organization, dealing with birds that have been damaged. And the two main things that damaged birds are cars and nerves and stress. So we might want to talk about how many birds are going to be stressful and nervous and even sit in a cage the rest of their lives and have their habitats ruined. I think that's very important. I think it's actually more important than money. I think right now our environment is more important than money and I find it, you are arrogant to come in here and go against all our town plans and make us go through this whole process again during this particular time in history. That is total arrogance. I'm, I'm shocked that I have to get out of my house and come and do this all over again. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Anne Rodamoff. A couple things, it's like you said it wasn't to make money, but yet you wouldn't do it if it wasn't for the profit. So I'm a little confused whether it was for the money or not for money. The, I think the original one was a hundred and sixty feet and this would be four hundred and thirty-eight, I think, if that's right. The other thing is, I, I also am concerned that once one is up there, that it's just gonna, it's setting a precedent and then they may not need to do that. But maybe somebody else will come in and say, well, we've got one there, so it's harder to say no once they know. And I guess if you really wanted to honor them, you could build a model down at the base where people could actually stop and look at it. Um, because I'm not sure if they were honoring the Wright brothers at Kitty Hawk, if they put a seven thirty-seven there.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, just as a matter of, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to respond, but I also know there are lots of people who want to talk, so.
Yep.
I'll, I'll just.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Victor Franco, I'm from Belgo. I'm not a speaker, I wasn't prepared for this. But I sit here and I listen to this money and the benefits and the dream. What about our dreams and our money and our homes for people who are going to live under the shadow flicker, the noise, the property values that have plummeted, the unsalable houses? Where are our benefits going to be?
They don't care.
And who's going to help us when we can't sell our house?
They don't care.
We have health issues, we have to abandon our home. We are literally on Belgo Road going to be living under the shadows of this thing.
And we said no once.
And we said no once.
We're going to defend.
There are not ready roads. Belgo Road is not a ready road. Grandpa's Knob Access Road is not a ready road.
We're going to defend our homes, tell me that.
So where, where are our benefits? Where are our dreams going to go?
What happens when I try to sell my home and nobody wants it because there's a wind turbine up there? What, what then? Any use don't care.
Lisa, who lives on the other side of the mountain, where, where's her benefits?
It's a bad idea.
Just for you guys to give, get federal subsidies and go out a little money to town?
Money to get.
Where is my benefit?
We're bad at it.
My town gets a few dollars?
It's gotta be the other side. You're gonna have a park up there? You're gonna put picnic tables and a grazing area?
Yeah, you, you, you mentioned a memorial. Are people going to be allowed to go up there? People do memorials for people to visit.
You're gonna let families go up there and spend the day with a picnic table and some grazing area? Maybe a community garden?
No.
Yes or no? I'm asking you guys a question. If the answer is no, it's an industrial site, it's not a historical site. It's a bad idea. Just giving you my opinion.
So, excuse me, is anybody gonna, are you, anybody gonna answer where my benefits are?
It's up to the chair to decide.
Yeah, I thought it was rhetorical. Yeah, go, go ahead. Sorry, babe, give it just a minute.
Very quickly, we, we have a lease for fourteen acres of land. We do not control the other seven hundred and seventy acres.
One is all it takes. Just one is all it takes. That, that's the fact. That is okay.
Okay, yeah.
With the original windmill, wind turbine on Grandpa's Knob, apparently the people who lived under it, the flicker from that smaller turbine made their lives almost unbearable. I mean, they had to close curtains and it wasn't, it wasn't pleasant. I'm not, so, it's this, it's not, it's not pleasant.
Any more questions, comments?
Mike Getcha, living in Little Hall. That was a big part of the previous wind project. And the description is a very heartfelt description, which we've all heard and we know the shadow parts of those descriptions, like if you, if you compare it to the tower that's up there right now and being at the same height and the same sizes, it's probably true, but the tower that's there now is like a lattice tower, the sun shines through it. Sometimes when the sun's out, you can't even see it up there. But a twelve-foot wide tower with like a hundred and fifty-foot blades going around and around, it, it's going to stick out way more than the communications tower is. And if you live like on our side, like maybe we won't be as close as Hubbardton or Castleton, but we live in, I call it the hollow. So like where I live, six miles from West Rutland, I can hear the train go through in West Rutland like that. I can hear the fire whistle in Rutland City because it just comes down the hollow. So like, I, I just wasn't a part of the last meeting to sit in a chair in the meeting. Took an airplane, I flew by some of these places there, just, they're, they're big, they're huge, they're gigantic. They, they, if the wind, if the sun is behind it and they are turning, then there is, you can see it more or less. So the similarities, they're good and, you know, there is a, there is like a heartfelt part of that that you want to, you want to have a little memorial. But I, I too agree, like, put up a plaque or put up something down below or put up some kind of a scale model in the museum in Castleton or the Historical Society. It's, it's, those benefits are going to far outweigh putting up a turbine, which in my opinion, totally my opinion, it's just going to open the door to like a domino effect all the way across. So once that door is open, there's probably no closing it. We live, we live with the tower, the people with the tower made some improvements on the lights, you don't even see it blink anymore at night, most of the time. I just think it's a bad idea for, for what, what's planned, you know? Sometimes when these projects are turned about and happen, there is a gigantic federal and state tax credit which comes back to the owner, which is very beneficial to them, you know? So there's, there's a lot, there's a lot more than meets the eye, a slick presentation. So my vote is no.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm also living in Fogle Hollow, and I have one question for all of you. How many of you people in here remember seeing that first windmill?
Oh, you did. I remember the old windmill. I was six years old. We could look at our kitchen window and watch it turn, just barely missing a burn that was, used to be standing there in my place. And, uh, so I, I remember the old windmill. It doesn't bother me, but I'm quite a ways away from it. People that live close to it, their concerns are much more important than mine. I see, I see big, these big windmills out in New York State, up near above Winoski, there's a bunch, there's a few up there. That is true, I enjoy seeing them turn, but I'm not going to tell anybody that lives close to it that they ought to enjoy seeing it turn, because maybe there is a downside. I don't know what it is, I never looked for it. Before, I would say, yes, it's a wonderful thing, I'd want to have more, I'd want to spend some time and go see what the hell's going on, get close to it and see. I've heard of, this last deal that we went through here a few years ago, there was a big controversy. It may have been all a hundred percent true. I don't know, I didn't check it out. It never went anywhere. And before it goes anywhere, it ought to be checked out thoroughly. But, uh, everybody wants to, green power, well, that's okay. But how many, how many of us want to go to bed with the chickens when it gets dark and shut our lights off? None of us do. And I feel as though if we want to pursue good, safe power, I think we could do a lot more with water in this state. I know fish can't jump over the dams and so that kills that. But as far as the wind goes, we've got solar panels on our, on our sawmill. And they're up there out of the way, I don't know how long they're going to last. I mean, if lightning storm come along, could put them right out of business. But they're not sticking out in the middle of a field with a fence around it. There's been some talk about people, they want to see wildlife go back and forth. Every one of these solar fields has got a fence around it. That's okay, but I'm not going to do that. I'm, I'm not going to, uh, take a position for or against until I have more information. I do think that these people that want to build this, to stand there and say just because this guy was a wonderful guy and you want to build a monument to him out of your own pocket, I find that questionable. There's got to be a dollar in it for you people somewhere. I don't spend money unless I think I'm going to get it back. So I don't know.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kim Ma, I'm on current. I almost unfortunately renewed a lot of acquaintances here this evening for a reason, but I never thought I'd renew such acquaintances again. So many of these people put their heart and souls into endeavor that many of you also lived through at the same time. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm very grateful to this select board to have visited this whole issue ten years ago. And with your help, this community loudly said, no industrial wind should be put on that ridge line, period, and that's all that needs to be said.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm Sokol, and I live on Whipple Hollow. Grandpa's Knob is right behind me, so I will have all of your ill effects. And I do say ill effects. As I mentioned before in, on our last visit about ten years ago, I do not want you in my backyard. I don't know how many more times I can say it. Stay out of my backyard. I don't want you there. If you want to do a museum, there's plenty of places that are open for rent. Rent a storefront, have at it. Do it there. You do not need to wreck or do anything else to our mountain tops. Do you understand? Do you really understand? Are you listening?
I'm listening to you.
I hope so, because we've been this round before and will be here again, over and over again, to fight you. I don't care how many you put up. I don't want any. I don't want one. I don't want ten. I want you to leave my backyard alone. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You don't want wind, okay? What other solutions do you have? I mean, I hear people complain, oh, we can't have the dam, we got to tear dams down because they affect the fish, and this, that, and the other. Or one thing or the other, I said, we got these clowns in Washington saying we're going to have electric cars here within the next forty years or something like that. And the electric grid in this country is for the shit. And they need to fix that, but they care more about illegals than anything else. And when I was at the Smithsonian, they said that nuclear power is the most environmental way of doing it, but you have people against that too. And I said, ever since they closed Vernon down there, my electric bill has gone up a hundred percent every month. And I said, we're supposed to have these people in Montpelier and that is supposed to be protection agencies, and what do they do? They give these solar panel people nineteen cents a kilowatt hour and then you have to, and Green Mountain Power's got to raise their rates. I said, you know, they got all these, these kickbacks with these solar farms and that with government things, but yet they get the high rate of, when they sell it. So what, what other solutions do you have other than we need to come back with the, you know, you had that gas line coming down through here, which no one wanted that, but they don't understand that natural gas is actually more efficient, better for the environment than oil and the rest of it. But I mean, you know, it's like some people cut their nose out, spike their face. You know, you got to have something. You got to, you got to improve somewhere. I said, and that Vernon plant ran for, good for a long time, and if you build it with the utmost safety and concern, there's no reason why you can't produce power. And even the water ones, when we, we were Vermont Marble when we, when they changed them over. I said, the, half the problem with the, with the water in Vermont is you got antiques generators running. I said, Vermont Marble over there, what was it? The three generators down there were nineteen oh five, the newest one was nineteen twenty-two. Till in the eighties, they put in that new one, which produced more, and they quadrupled their power, I believe, with changing and doing their generations and that on the dams. And if they would allow these people to, you know, improve, pull the generator, improve it, but the environmental, say, oh, no, you can't do this, you might hurt some cockroach or fish, you know? I mean, you know, you, you got to give one way or the other. When you go turn your light on and it don't turn on, you're going to find out, it's going to be a big difference. But I'm not saying wind power, I've seen the wind powers out there in California. And, and I said, I tell you, they're, they got the whole valley full of nothing but rows and rows of wind generation, but yet they shut down the other ones and then when they had the heat street, they had brownouts because it doesn't produce enough. It doesn't keep up with it. So they got to think about it. Which way do you want to go?
Thank you. Lisa?
What did you know, sir?
I'm Wayne Rowe.
Hi, Wayne. Wayne actually brought up a good point, which is kind of interesting to me, that all this solar that we've installed and the wind that we've installed throughout Vermont, and we're told that Vermont has to sacrifice for this and we have to help global warming and are you climate change deniers if you don't want this wind? And, you know, we get all this guilt trip thrown our way if we don't want these projects. So what has happened with our electric grades with solar? Oh, they keep going up. I just got notice that they're going up again. And even people who put in solar themselves are going to be charged a higher energy efficiency charge. So all this that we keep sacrificing, again, where are the benefits for us? Is this power going to local customers? Probably not. And are the benefits staying in Vermont in any of this four-town area? Heck no. They're here because land is cheaper in Rutland County and they think we're poorer and less able to fight them off. You got any projects going in Heinsberg, David, or in Burlington? I mean, come on, that's what this is really about. Or Charla, you got any going in there?
Go ahead.
Just to come back to process a little bit. First off, I want to say thank you all for coming out. This is exactly the kind of discussion that we want to have. This is exactly the kind of discussion that we want to have. And I'm sorry that some of you didn't want to come out, but you felt like you had to come out. I get that. I get that. What we want is a dialogue. We want it to be a dialogue based on facts, on information. Over the next nine, 12 months, we're going to be supplying that information to you. That will be public information. That will look at exactly how high is this tower? Once you've factored in the elevation, where's the nacelle, which is the top of the tower, and then where are those blades, and who's going to be able to see them, from where? We're going to be doing the environmental analysis, looking at what is the impact on birds, on bats. That's important work. We're going to do that work. We're going to look at the shadow flicker, we're going to look at the sound issues. Vermont has very strict sound regulations about decibel levels and distances from the project site to residences. All of that has got to be done. We're going to be sharing that information. What we're saying is, we're coming to you at the very, very beginning of this process, we're beginning the dialogue, we're going to be providing more information about the project, as are analytical work and the assessments that didn't make any sense to do until, in fact, we got this award last week, so now we're starting that process. And I'm saying, just let the information flow, and then you'll make your decision based on that information.
I think there's a saying that says, what part of no don't you understand?
I do wonder if this is being promoted as a community project, and last time, all five towns, I believe, were opposed, and if there's opposition this time, are you still going to push through if the communities are not interested in having this project go forward?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I think what we want to do is, again, engage with the select boards and discuss, again, what are the costs of the project, what are the benefits of the project? I think you need to get a fuller picture of those things before you say yes or no.
Okay, getting to the point where if it was no, then would you still push ahead?
12 months from now, after we've done all the analyses and we've laid out in front of the towns, here are the benefits that we perceive, and that's going to, obviously, it's a negotiation amongst the five towns, as to, you know, how the net operating profits of the turbine are divided up amongst the towns. That's an internal sort of, that's your kitchen cooking between the select boards, right? And then if 12 months from now, I think we look at, well, what's the situation then? I can't tell you right now, because I haven't looked at all the analyses yet. I don't know what are all our project costs going to be, to know, okay, today, what are the net operating profits of this turbine going to be? I don't have that information right now. We're going to be providing you with that information. You're going to have the same financial information that we have.
Okay. Go ahead.
You still want to answer a question?
I don't.
We looked at the benefit analysis 10 years ago, and we came up with a decision that it was not worth it. The benefit did not outweigh the negative, and we did not want those things on the bridge line, and I would hate that any town would prostitute themselves for a fuel box to put a windmill on.
Just one more little tip, just from my side of things. So I live with a person who gets incredibly severe migraine headaches, her mother does, or daughter, it's an inherited thing. So like, I heard the talk about the bats and the birds, but I haven't heard anything about like the community or the people, or real, live people yet. So with a migraine, it's like the on-off, the flickering, the flashing, so it's like a documented neurologist prescribed medicine to patients. We all live out there, there's not just one or two of us, there's a lot of us. I don't get them, but that side of the family does a lot. So our yard just happens to have 360 panoramic view of the mountains, so like, out of the corner of your eye, are they always going to see that moving, turning, flashing? Is it going to intensify like the negatives in their life for a migraine headache? And maybe you have never had a migraine headache, but if you haven't, that's a really good thing, but if you do get them, you know exactly what I'm talking about, it's pretty bad. So for something to go up that would intensify that, I don't think that's a good thing.
All right, is there, going on an hour, just like not, so let's start to wrap it up, but go. No, go ahead, I didn't mean to shut you off, I'm just, oh, I thought you had your hand up.
It was me. I was going to say, they're proposing that we have to do the, it's going to take nine months, so they're imposing this on us for nine months. We've already gone through, 10 years ago, or whenever it was, we went through this, all the select boards said no, and then they're saying, well, wait, we're going to tell you this, and we're going to tell you that, and then you can decide, but we've already decided, no.
Yeah.
I don't think our position has changed.
No. But it sounds like it's just going to get pushed through and continue on anyways.
So you say no also?
I continue to do the analytical work to supply you with the information and the facts about this project. That is a completely different project than what you resisted nine years ago. That was a completely different project, 20 different turbines going along the seven miles, with much greater environmental impact, much greater impact on bird migraines. I could go on and on. This is a very different project, and we're going to generate that information.
Okay, all right. I know, so the last thing I do, I'm going to wrap this up.
One last comment. What we're being told already is disingenuous, or either you haven't, either that or you haven't done your homework at all. You must know whether there is going to be blasting required for that. First of all, I haven't seen a 500-foot wind tower yet, I'm not an expert on this, that doesn't have an enormous concrete pad underneath it. So you told the town of Hubbardton that there would be no blasting, you told the town of Castleton that you didn't know, and now you've told us a tale about drilling into the rock. You don't know these things yet? You don't know the exact location of where this tower's going to be? I don't buy that. And if you don't have that, you darn well should have had it before you applied for the standard offer contract. This is absurd. You are wasting our time. I don't have time for this, all of us don't have time for this, and you're going to put us through nine months of coming to these boards. Alicia, an hour is just the beginning of this crap.
We have not done the geotechnical work to be able to answer the precise question of how the foundation will be done. It will either be drilling, not blasting, or it will be building a concrete pad that then the tower gets bolted to. We have to do the geotechnical work to answer that question. So that's why we don't, we haven't done it.
All right, well, this obviously is going to be an ongoing thing, we are going to wrap it up for tonight, so.
Thank you very much for your time, thank you for coming.
Thank you for letting us do this job.
Absolutely. Yep, sorry. Don't be sorry.
No, sorry.
Say hi to Jeff. Say hi to Jeff.
All right. Give it a minute, I've got to find my paperwork for this next, I've got to read seven stuff out in front of the letter that John wrote, I can't find it.
Bridge replacement.
No, I don't.
I know, I can't, I had that paperwork set aside, I thought I did.
See ya.
All right, we've got to move on, we're in the middle of our meeting, we've got to move on there.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the, consider sending the letter to V-Trans, expressing views on the bridge replacement project. I can't find your letter, though.
I can just do a little background by saying, after the September 1st meeting, we had had follow-up information from Carolyn Cota, the design engineer, saying that while they could make a few very slight modifications, they couldn't do a kind of fundamental review, because the process hadn't moved along so far. We thought maybe that was the end of V-Trans's position, but then I got a call from Kristin Higgins, who was reaching out, asking if the select board would put its thoughts on the current design into a letter for their consideration. And I told her that I'd be happy to try to draft something, but of course, the select board would have to review it, and suggest any revisions that they thought were appropriate. But I tried to capture what I thought I heard select board members saying at that September 1st meeting.
Okay. Well, the only thing, I remember reading it, hold on, I know there was one, oh, okay, number three, where it says, "Board members express disappointment with the current design", and that it sacrifices what some believe to be historic green island nearby, and "historic", in quotes, but it is indeed historic, is it not?
It's your letter, so you can phrase it however you'd like.
It didn't seem strongly worded enough, I guess.
How would you like to change it?
"Express disappointment that the current design sacrifices the historic green."
Okay, I can do that.
This is the one, this is the proposed letter, that had some of the, yeah.
Oh, there was one, I'm sorry, should probably take a moment and let people go.
I can't find my number one.
Please watch your step, everybody. We don't want you to die for our technology.
Excuse me, Alicia?
Yes.
I asked John to forward everything to me, maybe he did regarding the bridge project. I haven't seen this letter.
Okay.
Is there any way we could all get copies to?
Yeah, I can't even find like the whole, I have half of, oh, is that the whole thing together? Okay.
There is no letter, Rick, it's just a draft that I had put together. The board will decide on what your content is, and then I'm sure it'll put public records for it.
I just wondered if we could see it, that's all.
Yeah, and then also, because I know the deadline passed to be an interested party, but are we as a municipality automatically an interested party without having to file any paperwork?
Yes.
Okay, and I think in this letter, one of the things, this goes back in my history, when they put the turn lane on Route 7 at the end of the truck route, this is back, it wasn't too many years after they did that, there was a truck coming down through, turning, and there evidently was a car right tight to it. I never saw the car, never saw anything. I waited, the truck pulled over, there was nothing there, there was nobody coming from the south, pulled out to turn onto 7, and the next thing I know, right there is a car. And I'm afraid with the way this is being redesigned, that is what you're going to have. Somebody's going to be tucked in tight to a truck, they're going to be pulling out, they're going to be accelerating to go up that hill, the person coming off Route 3 is not going to realize they're there, they're going to look, they're going to think there was nothing there, and somebody's going to get killed. I think it's a very dangerous design.
Do you have any particular language you'd like to use, or how to express that in the letter? I could certainly take, you know, any input.
Mark Winslow of the Planning Commission, we have taken a position, the Planning Commission has drafted a position statement that we're going to submit at the Act 250 hearing. Would you like that read? It's a short thing. Would you like that read, or would you like that to be submitted to you?
I'd like to hear it, please, yeah.
It's the unanimous position of the Pittsburgh Planning Commission that we do not support the V-Trans proposal to change Route 7 and Route 3 intersection in our village as part of the US Route 7 Bridge Number 108 Replacement Plan. The Planning Commission cites three reasons for rejecting the intersection proposal. Number one, the plan calls for removal of historic green in the Pittsburgh Mills area, which is within Pittsburgh's designated village center. The elimination of this historic green would run contrary to state and local designations of the village center and historical properties. Number two, the plan is in direct conflict with the Pittsburgh Town Plan on a multiple of items. Number three, the plan will create unsafe intersection situation for the residents of our town and visitors passing through. The Planning Commission does support the original proposed layout 2015 from V-Trans that was resident reviewed for the bridge replacement with no change in Route 7 and Route 3.
Okay.
I think Butch Shaw might have some history, after having done some review with V-Trans personnel, on what the 2015 plan represents as opposed to today's plan.
Yes, John, thank you. What I've learned recently is the 2015 plan, I was told, was a conceptual plan, based on doing a piece of the bridge at the time, and that was before the bridge was in the condition that it's in now. So this new plan with the removal of the triangle, to get the temporary bridge in, so that they can do the entire project at once. And that's one of the reasons that I learned that the 2015 plan was scrapped. And I just learned that.
And I fully understand the fact that, no, 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 I'm just, all I'm saying, I just want to, not counter, I just want to say, I fully understand, and I think we all do, that green's going to have to disappear to fix the bridge and fix the road. It's just what's going to have to happen.
And I want to make it very clear, my position here is, is I support the decision of the governing body of the town.
Okay, that's, no.
And when you folks make up your mind what you'd like to see, I would urge you to send a letter to the agency supporting the project in construction, because it's a condition of a bridge.
Right. So, you know, I fully understand for the construction phase, but I see no reason why the 2015 plan after that can't be followed.
And I got, no comment, I can't answer for anyway.
No, no, I'm just, I just want to get my opinion out there.
Just telling you what I was going to say.
No, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying.
One other suggestion for a possible tweak of the letter is to offer up the opportunity for V-Trans and maybe a couple members of the select board to get together and have a meeting, if they'd like to have further discussions along these lines as to how to resolve the select board's concerns while at the same time getting the project moving forward.
My question was, why can't they remove the island, per se, during the construction, the whole bit, but after the project's done, we'll be back and have your lane just like it was done? I don't see where that should be a huge problem, and you still could get the bridge built next year.
Yes.
I see no reason why that couldn't happen.
Just as a follow-up, which said, 2015, there's a scoping report, it's on January 18th, it's this thick, talks about removing the green, it talks about installing the temporary bridge, and it said it would be done by 2019. We wouldn't be having this conversation tonight if that had been followed. Not to bore anybody, but there was a roundabout proposed down there, way back before we started the right-of-way issue, which we prevailed, the roundabout went away after we prevailed with the right-of-way issue. The green was to be removed, a new bridge to be constructed, wider bridge, which we support, 2015, elevations would need to be changed to connect into the bridge, and then the green would be replaced, reinstalled. Just for everybody's information, I also spoke with Kristin Higgins. Tomorrow, Historic Preservation is meeting us at the site with archaeologists, because what V-Trans submitted in their Act 250 application showed pictures looking upstream, Furnace Brook, nothing to do with the Pittsburgh Mills Dam, the Griss Mill, the Saw Mill, and it just, I don't know, I'm not being sarcastic, but it's just really, really something that we have gone this long and not finished the project. So the bridge is going to have to be, the bridge is going to have to be replaced, and let's do it, let's get it over with. And I really feel bad that, you know, we have, somebody said about taking everybody's time cumulatively on something that we're paying these people to do, and then when we're time cumulatively on something that we're paying these people to do, and then when we, when we talk with them, they're the engineers that are there, but then they gotta go to Fussin' O'Neil, who's the private concern that's designing this. Since this project started, it was CLD, and CLD has been bought out by Fussin' O'Neil. And then we go and retain professional highway engineer consultants at WGC, who some out of Utah, they have an office in Burlington. So, you know, the other night, this was, these meetings have been filmed, and it was really unfortunate because, well, look at how many people are in here. It's tight, and her projector didn't work, and the states, or our town stuff couldn't seem to work, but this was, this is the plan that they had, the final plan layout, in the presentation that she had, which just shows all the, the real, it was so small that you really couldn't get a picture of it. Yeah, the camera. This is the final layout that they were gonna do in 2015. It was pretty, it was pretty clear, there was a lot of engineering that went into that, the scoping report, which was, I believe, sixty pages, all the properties listed historic, this green area on state maps listed as historic. So, it's really unfortunate. And for the board's position, my wife and I and some other people have put together a petition to say that we don't support the final plan layout, that we support the 2015, and we've got 200 signatures in just the last four days. And there are people that, you know, that live up on Oxbo Road, there are people that live on Route three, and people that live in Pittsburgh and travel that highway. So, that's.
Can we move on at this point?
I just wanna add one thing. The state keeps saying, well, we finished, we're, I don't know, this project's so far along, we can't change it now. When they came to the Select Board meeting in 2017, we watched the film, Tommy Hooker, there were people complaining about it, historic, yada, yada, and Tommy said, "Well, you guys have some homework to do. This is, you know, it's not working." And that's the last we heard till 2019, and here it is, the same thing all over again. So, I don't know why they're saying that we didn't, people didn't complain, they did complain, Thomas clearly told them, didn't happen with it. So, I don't know what the, what their problem was, they keep designing it the way they are now, and no one wants it.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
How much money was wasted on this? Okay, you know, the state likes to waste money, you know, they survey the road a hundred thousand times. They already had a thing in 2015, this is the way it's gonna be, now they come up with another one? How much, where'd that money come from to throw into that, to waste? You know? I mean, it's just a big waste, when they already have it approved of what it's supposed to be doing, and now you get, what it is, is probably some engineer retired, and you get some newfangled idiot out of the college who knows everything, who never got his hands dirty, who never been in the mud, and that, and they think they know it all. And I said, and that, and I said, like I showed Rick today right up by my house, I said, "How am I supposed to mow that lawn when they put the culverts back almost to the line which I sold them?" And I said, and like I said to him, "The engineer mentioned something." So I told my son, "You own the property right now. If they put that bucket one inch over on my property line, call a lawyer." Because he said, "We own to this point." Well, that's all you're gonna take. That culvert in the original thing should have been on the other side of the water line. They put it there, and you got a five-foot bank in there. Who's gonna mow that bank in at an eighty-five degree angle? You know, these are, these are these engineers you got coming up here, no common sense, you know?
I have a question. Why did they change it?
You asking me?
No, we asked the same question.
No one knows.
Why did they change 15 to now?
We've asked and asked and asked, and we get no answer, there's no accident statistics.
They give us a slip lane.
A few of us from the Planning Commission went to meeting with the gal who came to do an informational on, you know, kind of a Q and A a couple weeks ago. Primary reason she went back to is constructability, and what she meant by that is during the course of construction of the new bridge, they couldn't use the 2015 plan because the flow of traffic ostensibly would be stopping flow of Route seven. There's no place to put in a detour, but this gentleman made an excellent, excellent point in that, and I made this point as well, is constructability is, is throughput of Route seven during construction isn't, is a concern for a short period of time, but the town of Pittsburgh shouldn't have to have a dangerous intersection for perpetuity because of, you know, the year or year and a half it may take to build that bridge, when it doesn't really seem to appear that the state has put forward an alternate or alternative to be able to kinda have their cake and eat it too. You know, maybe we'd have more limited traffic than we would with their most recent plan. However, we'd be left with, you know, a street flow or traffic flow that would be safe and make sense for everybody in this community. So, that's what they're saying is why they can't do the 2015 plan, the one that's in color over here. And that's why they're saying they have to do the final plan. I just wanna interject as well. For those of us who live in, we know that this hill, heading south from the mobile station, people come out of the village, and they pick up speed to get into that passing lane. So they come out of that on five, or thirty, and they really start picking up speed. And so as soon as that passing lane kicks in, it's kind of a raceway, if you will. Well, that raceway, if you will, is gonna start right around Arch Street. So, you know, we could, I think we could have all the police presence in the world, but, you know, every truck in the world's gonna start ramping up speed to get up that hill, and anybody who wants to pass, they're gonna start building up speed too. We're gonna create a very difficult and dangerous situation if we allow this to happen.
Because somebody coming off Route three has gotta deal with two southbound lanes, a northbound lane, and people coming off Oxbo.
Coming off Oxbo, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to traverse two.
That's a lot to walk.
So from Oxbo to Route three, you're really gonna have to do your Hail Marys. And taking a left off of three heading north, you're gonna have to cross two lanes of traffic. And by the way, those two lanes of traffic are gonna be picking up speed to pass some cars as they go up the hill. So, anyway.
We live at the bridge. We're right there.
Yeah, so I'm not telling you anything.
The last time I knew, there's thirteen thousand cars a day go by there. We've met with V-Trans several times, we've offered to sell them enough land so they could do this properly. But what they explained to me is, they can't buy our property because it's historical, it's on a historical map, and if they buy it and destroy it, they lose all their federal funds. And now they're gonna destroy the Village Green, which is historical. So does that mean they're gonna lose all their funds?
That's why, I don't, I don't know.
We've talked to several different engineers, different companies, and basically they're full of crap, all of them. And what they propose for this new bridge is a disaster right from the beginning.
I think we all agree, and so we also do, we are gonna write this letter, but I think strengthen up the language a little.
The good news is, the good news is that V-Trans.
It's all thirty-five.
It sounds like you guys are all in favor this happened anyway.
We're not, that we're what?
You're all in favor of the 2015 plan?
Yes.
Just, just to not to go over the endless topic.
Right.
I have a new idea, and we got the, we got a representative's view of what the change was, but hopefully our representative brings back to the state some of the views that the people have here as a representative of our town.
The good news is that V-Trans has asked for the Select Board's opinion, and we can, we're gonna give it to them, and perhaps even have meetings with them.
Okay.
But on the other side, we all have to be concerned that the more we have a wrestling match with V-Trans, the longer the bridge doesn't get replaced.
Right.
And that's a nuclear scenario, which we don't wanna go near. And Butch, I think, could speak to the problems if we wait too long on moving this project forward.
I can, I can give you an example of what can't, can't happen. It doesn't mean this bridge, but Bridge Thirty-One in Polley, the bridge, the main bridge on Route Thirty-One in Polley, the end dropped off this year, that was a, that bridge was rated fair and poor, just like this bridge was rated fair and poor. It dropped off the edge, and that wasn't bad enough. The state, it's actually, the town owned the bridge, the state went in and they short propped it, and they added the end back up, gave the prop back to the other end, and it's a five-week process. In the meantime, Route Thirty-One is closed. Forty-mile detour, you're the person living on the wrong side of the bridge. This bridge, this, this bridge, if something happens, they will close the bridge and immediately put in two detours, which could be weeks. And I can't envision a detour less than a hundred months.
No, there is no detour.
There's no, not for trucks.
Route Thirty or Twenty-two A.
We can get around because of automobile traffic.
Truck traffic.
Trucks can.
I think, I think the.
Fire department can't.
You can't. So I, I think the letter that the manager has offered you could put you on a path forward, especially with what you all here, heard here tonight. And then, with the offer to me with a small group with AOT to work through the problems. I've been through that process before with AOT, this town's been through that process before with AOT twice. Both times, the Traffic Committee ruled in the favor of the town of Pittsburgh. John won up, did a, presented a very nice presentation to the Traffic Committee. I went there and supported, and you got what you needed. True to the point. You didn't get everything, but there was a negotiated settlement. Brandon, Segment Six was dead in the water for several years. They weren't gonna lose our funding because it was a Jefferdier mark on the project, but the project was going nowhere. So, the town took a position similar to what we're talking about here tonight, had a couple representatives along, the town manager, meet with AOT in Mount Keelia several times and worked through the problems that everybody's having, and now you see that result of what happened. They had a pretty good project. So I think that is, that's an important key to your letter. I understand that not everybody's in love with the design, and I'm not commenting on that, so. But if you, if you forward a letter supporting the project as a whole, but maybe in a different form, that would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Because you wanna approach them with honey and some reasonable safety concerns rather than confrontation and hostility, which maybe turns them off.
This is not about confrontation and hostility. There's an Act 250 hearing coming up, October twenty-seventh is scheduled. Gotta go in there on the plan that's there. Tried to work with these people, and it's the same thing that it was with the right-of-way. Comes down to the last hour that things get changed and decided. The bridge, when they assessed it, they said that they felt that it was at least ten years before something would absolutely have to be done. That was, that was what they said. It's in a historic district, it's within the village, the designated village. So there's certain criteria that the state has to follow within those designs. Some bridges have to be totally rebuilt, they're not replaced, they're rebuilt with what was, you know, what the design was. So, again, what we have is, again, V-Trans, now, we're going to an Act 250 hearing on October twenty-seventh, unless they withdraw their application and try to come up with something that's gonna work. But here regardless, that's there. You have statutory party status there, as well as the Planning Commission's, and positions have to be taken. So, I guess, at this point, I'm trying to think what the best way to put it is, back in 2017, we were able to recover the video from PEG TV because the minutes didn't really give a good overall of what happened at that meeting, other than I submitted the historic stuff to the town, there was discussion, and that they would get back to us. And I believe that Tom said in that video that, yeah, you guys got a lot of, got your, got a lot of homework to do. We never heard back from them. So, like I said before, Carol Cota, who came down here, she gave a good presentation of what's going on, and they said it was about safety, and I think that's what we, what we all want. We want the bridge replaced and the road, current roadway pattern to stay the same. And I noticed that Bill Hampel is here, I mentioned, I spoke that night, he's the fire chief, and I'd like to hear his comments in public on how he feels about how it would be with emergency vehicles.
I just, like I said before, I just, coming off Route three really bothers me for anybody to come out there in a, say, let alone a fire truck, with two southbound lanes and a northbound lane, and somebody trying to get off Oxbo, and to turn on Route three with a, with a fire apparatus. If a truck has to be, happens to be coming off Route three at the same time, it's not gonna be a good thing, in my opinion, from what I've seen. With the way it is now, you can take that, take that road, straight road, and go on, and not have to worry about that. And I've been on the department for thirty-nine years, and I remember just one accident there on that road, and that was before they put the yield sign up, so. As far as that being a safety issue, I don't see where it is, the way it is.
The way it sets up, it, it, traffic flows easier, and you're not gonna stop speeders.
No, no.
It seems to me, and I, I use that road pretty everyday, and I have a pretty, pretty good-sized truck, as big as anything on the road, really, that's legal. When I'm coming down seven, going south and going on the Route three, with that slip lane, as they call it, that is the best possible way to get me off seven and onto three. If they wanna make it a little bit wider to the west, that would even make it better. Having that island there, perfect. It gives me a chance, have a little more room if somebody pushing across there to stop. You can see over the island, so it doesn't block your visibility. That island, I think, provides a lot of safety. It just seems that way. And the, if they do it the way they, the way of that slip lane, and I have to go follow seven around, almost stop if I'm loaded, almost stop to make that right-hand corner, and there's a car coming off from Route three. It was explained that this, they'd have a thing there you could run over. Well, running over them, I, I do that down Manchester. That's a crazy thing down there, too. Look, it's much more prone to accidents. I don't believe that the records would show there's been a lot of trouble. I think that road right down there is probably one of the reasonably safest intersections there is around. I, I'm not aware, and Rick, he, he's right there, and he probably could tell me whether I'm right or wrong, but they don't have much trouble there.
We got the crash statistics from Carol Cota, the most recent one that they were using for that. Again, they did it in 2015, so they were using crash statistics then, so when we talked with her with this plan, she gave us the crash statistics, which are two years in the rear, but those are the latest you can get, and for Route three in the slip lane, the accidents is zero.
The accidents, I think, if they change that, take that slip lane out there, take the island out there, I think your accidents are gonna go up, I'm pretty sure they are. Anybody coming south on seven and going up the hill, if I'm ahead of them and I gotta go onto three, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just raise hell with their run on that hill. You're headed down to Proctor with a fire truck, you're going to have to come almost to a stop to get around that corner. Whereas it is now, and you can't speed through there, but you can roll through there and go right up that little hill there on Route 3, not even know it's there. If somebody, and I'd be glad, they ain't going to take me up on it, but I'd be glad to sit in a car, on an unmarked car with any state man, engineer, or expert and watch that for a half a day, just to see how the traffic performed. And I think they'd have to admit that they're doing a pretty good job, just the way it is.
A lot of state guys sitting down there right now, watching stuff every day. So it wouldn't be hard to do that.
Yeah.
Well, they want to take slip lanes out through Vermont.
I know, I've seen it done in some other areas.
And my comment was, well, we go into Proctor and everybody from Proctor slides right over Route 3 and we stop and wait for them to do it. You go down to the other end of Route 3. If you went over to Center Rowland and then came home through Proctor, you'd go onto Route 3. I said it at the previous meeting, when you drive down the interstate, when traffic comes on, they merge on. You can't fix the nut behind the wheel. We used to fix cars, but we could never fix the nut behind the wheel. And we just
Towels stayed loose.
We just tried to always, you know, through this whole thing, we've tried to understand what was going on. And we get told, well, this is the way we're going to do it and it was for safety. We've got the whole transcript of it. And now it's something totally different. Slip lanes, I think, at one time were probably presented as being safe. And they were engineered. So now we say, no, no, no. One size doesn't fit all. And John Haverstock brought up a, a, a point at the last meeting. It's a federal highway and there's a lot of things that I think V-Trans was quite bold. And they weren't, um, they weren't dotting their i's, crossing their t's. And I think they took some chances on this because there's a lot of things in the scoping study of the road. What was done in 2015, which I referred to, the scoping report, was on the bridge. Wasn't on the road. There was never a scoping report done that I've ever seen and I, and I've asked Carol for it. There's also been, um, a number of other things that were done, like adding a right turn lane. Was there necessity? You know, there was a, there was a question about a light. It is a federal highway. There are federal guidelines that do have to be followed. I know a lot about right of way because the feds are involved if there's eminent domain process. I'm not familiar with what those scoping studies on roads are. Never seen them. But the scoping report on the bridge I did see. And everybody got it that night at the town hall. And that's what we thought we were going to get. So when the, when Carol Cota came to you people last, and she said, where were you people in 2017? While you people responded, unfortunately, PEG TV has got a great archive down there because we recovered the 2017 selectmen's meeting. So, thank you.
All right. So do we have to take action as far as, do we have time to tweak the letter or?
I think I've got what you want. I can circulate it tomorrow and get a quick thumbs up.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right, cool. All right, thank you.
And then once it's official, I'd be happy to share it.
Thanks. Just wondered what I want, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay, can we talk about the second annual tractor parade?
Sure.
A little more lighthearted here.
Right?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Wait, nobody wants to hear about the tractor parade? Everybody knows when it is, right?
That's okay. The less people hear it, the better.
I might just have to pull my tractor in.
You should.
Watch your step there, Al.
Well, you're better.
How about you?
I'm going to get my tractor.
Colleen, thank you. Watch your step.
So, it's going to be October 23rd this year. Basically the same as last year. We're going to leave at the Pitcher Village Farm at 1 o'clock.
Okay.
The only thing that's changed is rather than us going down Toronto Road, or, sorry, Pine Woods in Toronto, we're going to go straight down Plains Road, right back to the farm.
Oh, okay.
We're going to, we have, do have some food vendors and stuff this year. It was a big question last year, so.
Yeah.
And
We're going to have a, like a Tacha truck type of thing, not, Tacha tractor.
Yeah.
You can go up to the tractors and talk to the people. You know, maybe even have the kids or whatever, or you can sit on the tractor. Uh, see, and
Will that be before or after?
After.
After, okay, cool.
You know, so people can come back and have it all, you know, done. And we're also going to have, at the firehouse, Jason Davis and a special guest. I'm not telling everybody. Don't be asking. Special guest will be announcing the parade. So there'll be, you know, the tractor, you know, number 25 or whatever will be dri- is driven by so-and-so. And it is a X-year and Y-model of a tractor. Just so that anybody that's in the area can kind of, you know, get to know, say, hey, okay, oh, that's what that is. And then they can go back at the end and they can go back to the farm and say, okay, hey, I want to take a look at that tractor after and get better look at it and get onto it if they want to, just to kind of, you know, be more community oriented.
Make it more of a day event.
Yeah.
Try to raise more money.
Date, please.
October 23rd.
And the time?
Uh, we'll leave the farm at 1 o'clock.
Yeah. And all tractors are
Time we get back is
Sure, variable.
Yeah.
When do you think people should start coming to enjoy the event?
Yeah. No, my brother's not there.
We're going to start at, we're going to start, it's going to start at 1.
Right.
So we're going to leave the farm at 1 and then make the route, which is down Art Street, in front of the firehouse, up onto seven, um, just then on to
Furnace Road.
Furnace Road. And then
Plains Road.
Plains Road, up around, back to seven and then down.
Will there be any events before you step off, like barbecues or parties or music or anything?
We're going to have people there for vendors, you know, with food and such. And then we're going to have, you know, I think we're going to have different locations with people.
Yeah, we're, we're still trying to throw around ideas as to where we can, you know, we don't, maybe we don't want to have all the vendors at the farm. Maybe we can have one down near the firehouse or up this way. But we have, we have a few.
So what time do you start at the farm?
Well, everybody has to be at the farm. Registration starts at, uh, is it 11?
Yeah.
11, until 12:30. That's what, that's what we're asking about. Just so that we can get everybody lined up. You know, we're going to try to get them all lined up previous. You know, as we get them in, we're going to, okay, you're number one and you're, you know, so on. So that we can get it, so that it flows better than it did kind of last year. Last year was, you know, first year, you know, trend learning.
Yeah, the lead vehicle was disabled for 20 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but that'll be fixed this year, I think.
Why does it start? Do I need to full start again? I don't know.
Awesome, great. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
I've got flyers if anybody wants to.
Oh, yeah. John, did Bob Harnish decide to just table this for another night?
Yes.
He was like, wow, that's a lot of people in that room.
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
I want to thank the Slade Lord for your backing us up on the Route 7 project. They appreciate it. It's real important.
Okay, thank you. We run out? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Bill.
Take care. Have a good one.
See ya.
Appreciate you guys.
You're welcome, October.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, oh my God, I need
We have George Yan, he's the solar developer.
All right, yeah, let's do
Steve Belchers here for the district of mosquito district.
You see that, Mr. Yan?
Yeah, I can read it. Why, you can't?
No, I need new glasses, apparently. I can't see it yet. Yeah, let's, let's do the, um, solar, the Adams Road Solar Pla- uh, project.
Uh, Mr. Yan, are you with us? Yes.
Yes, good evening, guests.
Hi there.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, let me, let me share my screen. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Just, uh, hold on here. All right, so, um, good evening, everyone. Please let me introduce myself. My name is George Yan and my colleague Andrew Mills, who is already connected via Zoom. You can see him there.
Oh, hello.
Yes. Yeah, we are a part of TG Vermont Solar LLC, which is 100% an athlete of Nexera Energy Resources. I work as a project manager in this, in this company. And, um, we are one of the largest American renewable energy, energy companies in the country. You know, with the most, um, track record and projects built in the last 10 to 15 years in, in the US. So that's why you can, uh, you can be sure that the project will be built with the highest uh, security and technical standards for the town, for the community. And, uh, we're committed, we're committed to produce solar, clean, silent, and cheap green sustainable energy for the community where you can, where you can save money from, from, and benefit from, from all this solar. But for those who have already installed panels on their home, they can, they can share the experience of, of installing solar, which is, which is beneficial, right? The long-term, when we see, um, high rates of electricity going up every, every year, solar will give you the certainty of, of a flat rate. And that will be guaranteed as a, as a cheaper option in the next 20, 25, 30 years, no? We're also committed to, um, to produce solar renewable energy to the state, to the town, and also for, uh, the federal government to reach the, the renewable energy goals by 2030. It helps from warming. It is not wind. I have heard a lot of discussions with, with wind. Solar is much environmental friendly. We're not using batteries, so there's no, no risk of, um, explosion and kind of, we're just putting solar panels. It is relatively a, a small project, so 2.2 megawatt solar. The good thing is that I heard that there is also a solar project, which is called Kendo, which is already in a, in advanced stage of permitting and, um, discussions with the town and residents, which is a very good news for, for also our project. And we are, uh, very environmental friendly. Today I will present you more details about this 2.2 megawatt solar projects in my presentation. It is a project that got awarded last year in the Vermont Standard Offer with, uh, with a PPA. Few projects got award, by the way, and we're one of those. It is already approved by the utility, uh, Green Mountain Power, that we have capacity in that point of connection. And, um, yeah, let's, let's go through the presentation. If you can, if you can see the screen. Okay. Yeah, this project is located in Adams Road. To be exactly, is 574 Adams Road. It is, um, 118, almost 118 acres. It's a, it's a huge land where we're only using around 13 acres, no? So we are using a little bit less than 10% of it, no? And, um, the good thing is that the project will be, I will explain more about the layout in the next slides, but the project is right in the middle of, of the land where, um, people who drive through Adams Road or pass by the area will not even notice it because we have, um, an inclination, a slope in the land that doesn't allow visibility inside the, the project, no? And adding the trees and all the vegetation that surrounds the project, it is, it's almost impossible for, for, uh, people who pass by to, to see the project in the end. So we will not affect the visibility. It will be far from all the residents. And, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's located in, um, next to a recreation trail that I will explain later, but it, it doesn't really affect the, in the end, in this, as you can see, there's a high middle trail and steep rock trail officially. I took this picture from, from the town's website. So it goes, it goes near to the solar project, but in the end, we will not affect it. We will put fans that will surround our, our solar panels. We have left sufficient setbacks, uh, 25 feet to be exact, from, from all the, all the sides of it. So people will not, will not be affected on this, this trail. We have, we have, uh, this is, this is more or less the access and, um, and the part that the solar project will be. We have a little bit of wetlands over here. We're not, um, affecting those and respecting all the necessary, um, environmental assessment. This is, um, almost the final layout that we have designed. As you can see, it's divided in three parts. And this will be, it will be in the middle of the land. In the end, we have, from, from the west, we have around, um, 1,300 feet from, from Gold Farm Road. We have almost 1,800, almost 1,900 from Oxford Road, 1,300 from Adams Road. So it is, it is very far from all the sites to the, to the closest location and neighbors from. So that's, that's why we, we insist that this is going to be almost not visible for, for any, any people who just pass by, by the project, yeah. We have run a lot of studies and, uh, the project seems, uh, very suitable for, for solar. We have run the environmental assessment, interconnection, geotechnical surveys, other surveys, wetlands and natural resources, archaeological. We're not affecting any of our, our archaeological, um, um, faces in, in this project. And the 45-day notice to the certificate of goods was submitted 45 days ago, no? So we are currently working on the final application, um, for the CPG. And that will, that will be hopefully by the end of, uh, October. Anything else? Yeah, uh, it will be surrounded by a seven-foot-high security fence. So in terms of, uh, security and, um, distance from, from the people who pass, uh, near to the project will not be, not be an issue, right? Will be fully fenced and avoid, um, the entrance of any, um, even animals or, or people that pass by the project, no? And, uh, our experience in Vermont, we, um, our company has done projects in, in almost in every state of the country, but especially in Vermont, we have, uh, we have built in 2018, a 19 megawatt, which is one of the largest projects in Vermont. To be specific, it was in Windsor County. And, um, we committed successfully. We are, um, a super environmental friendly company that will not affect the residents. We are so committed to safety standards, will not affect the residents, the road and construction. We take care so well that we, um, will not affect any, any of the neighbors surrounding them. And other projects that are going on, similar to this one, 2.2, uh, just for your reference, we are also, um, close to build a project, not ready yet, but we are close to build it in, in Saint, uh, Saint Albans, no, in, in, um, in Franklin County. Another one that we're targeting in the future probably will be in the surrounding area, but not sure yet. And this Adams Road solar will be our second project and in Vermont, um, the third one, I'm sorry, the third one will be. Anything else? Uh, well, the project benefits that will bring to the town and the community is that, uh, first of course, will produce silent, clean, safe renewable energy that, um, the federal and local government will, will need it for their energy, renewable energy goals. Will bring to the town, um, in terms of property tax revenues, around 20 to 30,000, not a little bit more. During construction, will bring a lot of jobs during operation maintenance as well. Uh, we will be using a lot of the local tractors, resources that we have in, in Pittsburgh. So this will be, this will be very benefit for, for the job opportunities and, and contractors in the town. And we're committed to the commission of the land once, uh, the 25 years of, um, of life of the project, we will put it back, remove everything. We have committed to, um, pro- provide a decommissioning bond. And, uh, it will be a farm land as well, again, in the future after 25 years. I'll pause there to see if, um, any of you have any questions or suggestions that you want to ask Andrew or myself.
Yeah, Dave.
Oh, the way you've got like laid out, will it be one fence surrounding it or three separate fences around the three separate lots?
Yeah, that's a very good question. It will be two big fences in the end. The one big fence will be surrounding the, I call it three areas, the one, two, three, as you can see in the map. The big fence will cover the first and second part. And the third fence will, will cover the third part.
Uh, soil type? Is it primag? Is it? Uh, soil type, is it primag, is it, what is it, do you know?
Yes. Sorry, I'm introducing myself real quick. I do, yep, uh, my name is Andrew Mills, I'm a civil engineer with the HP. Um, yes, it's almost all primag, uh, within the project area.
Is the fencing chain link fencing?
No, um, we typically specify kind of an agricultural style fence that has the gradations um, in the, the mesh.
Oval wire.
Usually actually install it upside down, so the smaller animals can use the, the bigger holes at the bottom of the fence, things that still keep the larger animals out of the.
Okay, and then a few slides back, it looked like it cuts really close to the, to the walking trails? How close is it to the trails? Right there, that split rock trail and then there's the next slide or, there you go.
You can see, you can see here in the orange, the, the, the route of the trail. Specifically on this, on this line, it will be the closest to our project up here on this one. And if you go back to the layout, that is exactly where it goes here, right in the, in the dotted line here.
Okay.
It will be, it will be far, the closest part will be here, but we have um, according to the suggestions of the town, we have left twenty-five to thirty feet on both sides from the fence of the, of the project. Also will be enough distance um, to leave it for, for the people to use the trail.
And that was input from Bob Harnish, he was in touch with Mr. Yan and I believe they spoke maybe even at the site to discuss how to keep the trails open for public use and all that.
Okay, but you'll be able to see them though, though, right? The fence will be visible from the trails? Or will it be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct, yes. And uh, and yeah, you're, you're, you're right, that, that was advised by uh, Mr. Bob um, few months ago to the thirty-five and thirty feet setbacks.
I have a couple of questions if I could, um, are, is the um, project land, the land for the project, is that gonna be owned or leased by you folks?
Yeah, so initially we have secured the land lease agreement, um, the owner, um, the project signed a a long-term agreement, twenty-five years lease for us. Um, we are evaluating the possibility to reach an agreement with the landlord to, to probably buy the land lease that so. But, but at least a river must be secured initially and probably that will be um, uh, something that we will probably keep now. So it's still, it's still open there, but in, in any case, uh, we recorded the land lease and that's something that is effective.
So any kind of problems with the marriage of the owners is not gonna impact your project, correct?
So, not, not really, so in the end, um, it doesn't matter if the, if the ownership of the land changes, so the, we have signed the lease and it is recorded already. So we'll go to the next landlord who buys the land. Or in the end, for our benefit, if we can buy the land, if they come down this way to buy the land, that will be even, even easier for us now, so. That's, that's still, that's still something that we, we need a negotiation with the landlord. But um, what we have today is an executed lease agreement with her.
Okay.
Um, I was wondering, did you look at properties on Goat Farm Road that would look down on it? Are there properties up there that would be effective?
Take that George if you want.
Yeah, Andrew, would you like to say something about that one?
Yeah, so we have done a preliminary uh, visibility map, which kind of accounts for the terrain and the vegetation in the surrounding area. Um, and there are kind of a few small pockets of what appears to be potential areas along Goat Farm uh, that the site could be visible from.
Are these, are these people aware of that? Cause none of them are here.
If they are abiding landowners, I believe they receive a copy of the, what that they just.
Yeah.
You believe they do that?
Well. They, they, if they're an abiding landlord, they were sent.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And then I'd like.
Yes, usually, usually there's um, sorry, usually there's a mailing list as part of the application with all the names and addresses of the surrounding neighbors that will receive a copy of the, of the application. And they need to, they need to provide their, um, their opinion.
Okay, so um, and the height in the picture that you had, is that the, the height from the ground that they, but they didn't look like they're very far off the ground, is that normal? The, the snow and, you know, and? Did you, could you hear me?
Yes, um, so uh, I think if you've read the site plan, they actually will be uh, taller. It'd be um, a maximum of sixteen to eighteen feet tall, I think. Um, they're actually, you notice on the site plan, and George, if you wanna put that back up. Uh, these panels are oriented north to south, which is a little different than you might see in uh, some of the more recent fuller projects. Uh, and the reason for that is they're actually on trackers, I'm gonna use my hand here if you can see it. So they actually, you know, in the morning are oriented to the east and then they actually rotate along that north-south access to follow the sun. So at a certain point, um, you know, in the morning and the evening, it will be higher than uh, they would otherwise be.
So the picture in the very beginning wasn't really what they will look like?
Oh, on, on the cover page of your presentation, George, I forgive this a little bit.
Could you go back to that?
So, yeah, so thi- this question came also last week when we presented a project to the planning commission. Um, and, and these are very good examples of the one axis tracker that we are targeting to install. They're not so high, um, we responded last week to the planning commission that is maximum, in the maximum angle um, will be a little bit more than seven, seven feet, so it won't be that tall in the end now. So in normal conditions will be around five to six feet in the end.
Okay, I thought it said seven feet.
Oh, go ahead.
Seven, seven, so it's, it's not that tall, yeah.
So those rotate on that axis, so you're starting at what? Forty degrees and forty, what are, what are your degrees each way?
Andrew, would you like to answer that or I can, I can do so?
Uh, I'm basing this off of memory, I'm, I'm a civil engineer on the left, so.
Oh, yeah.
But I believe it was um, a maximum of sixteen degrees, um, but maybe a little bit less than that, um, depending on the topography, um, it would be able to rotate as much if it's on the side hill.
So they'll go sixty degrees each way, each side of the center axis?
That's my recollection, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. That's correct.
So how far along is this property?
I don't.
Well, it's a forty-five day notice, so it's.
And the, the planning commission has endorsed the project at their meeting last week.
I see.
You, you mentioned a twenty-five year, uh, are you saying that in twenty-five years that this will be the end of it? Or will it continue on indefinitely or what's the long, what's the long range?
Yeah, usually, usually the lease agreement is signed for twenty-five years and the equipments and the panels are um, producing its maximum efficiency and power during the first twenty-five years now. And then after twenty-five years, it's quite optional. In the end, if we reach an agreement with the landlord, if we reach an agreement to extend it with the, with the utility and the panels are still okay to produce a base at a low half of, of the current production, then we will probably extend it uh, a lot of years, another ten years. So there is um, also some, some strategies in the industry to, to change the panels or to upgrade the panels after the ten, fifteen year anniversary. So we can, we can upgrade those panels and it will last longer in the end. So um, but currently that's the plan, the twenty-five years will be enough to um, basically for the plant to depreciate all, all the investment and uh, and, and that's it.
Yeah, you go on.
Um, one more question, I, I'm sorry.
No.
Um, where did you come up to with the twenty to thirty thousand, where, where's that, how do you come up with that figure?
Oh, yeah, um, Joe, according to our experience with um, uh, projects in, in, in several states or even, even in Vermont and in uh, many towns, we usually um, the towns evaluate the property tax based on the equipment cost or sometimes we can reach um, another way with a pilot and um, usually that's normally the average, the national average that is, is, is uh, is for this, for this two point two megawatt size now.
So it's the material of the production?
Uh huh, it's more, it depends on, depends on the town. Sometimes it is better uh, for us to, to reach an agreement for a pilot. If not, if the preference from the town is to just evaluate the equipment cost and so so buying in the end will be almost the same number.
All right, I, why not indeed?
Our assessor happens to be in the room, she might have a question for you.
Well, I have a question and, and maybe an answer on the, the taxation piece of it. I guess since we're talking about that, I'll go back to my question. So on taxation, solar plants in Vermont are pay, pay into the ed fund uh, based on the uniform capacity tax, which is a, a price per kilowatt of production. So they'll pay into the ed fund on that and in my opinion, it's a pittance of what the rest of us pay into the ed tax on our properties, but that's the politics of taxation in Vermont with renewables. And the municipal side of it is, I, I have not seen any pilot plans and I, unless they're offering you more money than would be standard for us to tax on the municipal side, I would recommend you not do that. Um, I, I have to do the math, I think twenty to thirty thousand might be a little low, but I, I'd have to do the math. I mean, we do it based on, most towns in Vermont, if they're knowledgeable of what the, the PVR guidance is, uh, as far as taxation, to calculate the municipal value, we use the, uh, I think it's Sandy Alab's PV value tool, which calculates the value of the solar plant based on a basically an income and expense model of, of production. Um, and that's the same model that I can use on lending appraisals, I'm an appraiser as, as well. And we do it, lenders will accept it to document value on a residential uh, solar uh, installation. So it's the same, same process of that, only when we get to that value with the solar model with the state of Vermont's advice, we uh, multiply it by seventy percent, so we cut off thirty percent off the top. Oh, and the first fifty KW is exempt, so.
Oh geez.
A lot of exemptions for renewables in our state, um, but we still tax it on the municipal side.
It just sort of seems to me, I mean, if you're talking in terms of property tax, that seems unbelievably cheap because my, my house, I live about a half a mile away from this project and I pay twelve thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And I think my piece of property was worth a hell of a lot less and that piece of property is gonna be worse when it's fully operational.
Yeah.
I think we gotta ask for a lot more than that.
That's not enough.
Yeah, no, no problem, in the end, in the end, we believe that we will have a discussion on that, it's uh, also that. And, and the project is not that expensive as, as you can imagine, it's still a very small project, two point two. But in the end, we are more than happy to discuss it further. Once the CPG is uh, going to be approved, we can, we can start the discussions opening with the town. We have no issues about that.
Got a question too?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Jo- uh, George, you had emailed me a, a while back, me and the zoning administrator, I believe, uh, about uh, stone walls and whether we had any rules in Vermont about moving stone walls. So my question is, um, I, I don't know the answer to that, whether there are any rules about that, but I would think that people in Pittsburgh wanna know whether you were gonna change kind of that historic um, agricultural landscape and move stone walls and bulldozers or anything like that uh, happening on this site.
Right, that's correct, um, we haven't touched the stone walls, we wanted to respect those as is, as you can see in the, in the site plan here. Um, we have stone walls in this part, also in this part. And basically, we're leaving those as is now, we, we, uh, also a little bit of stone walls here at the, the trail. Um, and we don't wanna touch them also to avoid any, any troubles or whatever um, issues we will encounter there, you know, we will leave it as is.
For the, for the town tax on, on the stuff, as, as it gets older, it depreciates it, depreciates in its ability to generate. So does the taxes decrease with that or would they stay the same?
Well, right now, no, Joe, but if the solar lobby, solar industry continues to lobby, they'll get more breaks. They just came out with one that passed to be effective July first where it very vaguely in the legislation says we may not alter the value of the land under a solar lease, which is, I mean, I won't, I won't go into that, but it's, it's wrong. It defies every principle of fair assessment that I know.
It's gonna keep you busy.
Uh, it's.
Yeah, but is the land, the land is what it is, you, you, you're taxing the plant on the land. The land is still worth what the land's worth.
Uh, no, no, that's not true. So a piece of land, let's, let's take this, so a piece of land that is a vacant piece of land versus a piece of land that might have a, a mobile home on it. Okay, we're not talking high finance here, but the, the value of that mobile home site can be calculated and can be defended based on the income stream. So if that landlord is getting four hundred dollars a month for that site, extrapolate that out with the income approach and that's what the value of that site is, that's.
But that's the site, it's not the entire chunk of land.
Right, but this is the case where this, this solar company is right now, they do not own the land. So the land value would be assessed to Ms. Seer or whoever owns it um, when that is developed beca- based on that, that solar lease. And that's what we've been doing for quite a few years, since solar started popping up like mushrooms everywhere in Vermont. We've uh, you know, we followed that guidance for PVR. And then just this year, they, I don't know much, how'd they sneak it by us, they slipped that into.
They didn't sneak it by us, it hit us right in the forehead.
Well, they, they slipped it by, by us assessors and PVR who were kinda watching it and uh, and got that in.
You suppose, you suppose from one state to another, there's quite a bit of difference in, in this stuff.
Uh, yeah, I couldn't speak to other states, um, so I, I'm sure George's estimates he's given you are, are reasonable given nationwide averages, who knows?
Yeah, I know. All right, thank you.
Um, we should probably ask him if he's looking for a letter of support from the slipboard.
Is that what?
He's, he's, he's getting one from the planning commission, that's the only reason I ask.
Yes.
Oh, I don't want, I'm, what does everyone think? I'm not so sold on it yet.
Well, we're gonna do this, I, I can't see any difference what tonight would make.
Yeah, why don't we, what? Yeah, why don't we postpone it till the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't know.
Will that work for you? Couple weeks?
I don't know.
I, I think so, George?
Yeah, can you, can you please repeat the, the question?
No, you're, you're looking for a um, letter of approval, whatever. If we wait, if we, give us a couple of weeks to think about it, is that okay?
Uh, yes, that is okay, yes.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting, John.
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
All right, we're gonna take, we're gonna take like a five, ten minute recess, cause this has been two, over two hours. Let's just take a, take a minute.
We lost a selectman?
Yes, we did, he ran to go, he ran, he needed to go, he's gonna be back.
If I could have a recess, I could last two of them.
I know.
Did I shut the camera off?
No, I don't think so, we're just recessing.
No, that's to you.
To me?
Yes.
Stuff to get to. No, it's fine, it's just, we're gonna keep it, keep it rolling.
We gotta keep rolling. She's saying, you show up and we're here all night, what's the deal? I do, I enjoy, I enjoy talking with you, yes, over the years. We didn't always agree, but we always got along.
Yeah, okay, all right, cool, thanks. Yeah, you too, oh, perfect timing, perfect timing.
See you Lisa.
See ya, we just took a little break and now it's starting.
Thank you.
See ya.
Bye.
Good night.
All right, um.
Yeah, I did, barely.
Would you want somebody from the BLSG district who'd like to talk with us?
Oh, Steven, yes, Steven. Steven, are you there?
No.
Oh, hey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't realize I was gonna be joining such a, um, interesting.
I didn't realize I was gonna be joining such an interesting. But, no, it's, it's very simple. We've made some little tweaks to the agreement, to the resolution to amend the agreement of the towns. And tonight actually is the sort of deadline for warning it for our next BLSG meeting, um, so that we can vote on it and then bring it back to you. The tweak are in paragraph one, in response to Lester's concerns about, well, you know, we're giving you the right to just raise your budget unlimitedly every year. We've committed to no more than a five percent budget increase. Um, if any of you saw Wayne, the newspaper article in today's Rutland Herald about Wayne Ralstonberger, the former treasurer, talking to the Brandon Board. He actually said that we really hope not to be raising budgets at all. And we get to keep it as steady as possible. But we're dealing with unpredictable year, year to year variations in the treatment required. There, there, there's some unknowns in there, but, but our, our budget is based on our expenses. So we've, in response to Lester, we're adding a sentence that say, says it won't be increased more than five percent. And then in response to the Salisbury situation, um, we are replacing the words portion thereof or other sum that it so elects, which was the clause that they used to say, well, we are allowed to elect what we are going to pay. We are replacing that with the words in a manner each municipality deems appropriate, so that we're looking more at the source of the funding rather than the amount of the funding. And then each town will provide the district the payment schedule that the town will follow. Those are the basic changes, and I've, I've been asked, tasked with seeing, I, I trust you all got the thing earlier. I, I emailed it to, to John.
Yes.
And I've, I've been tasked with finding out whether you have responses, objections, um, or, or thoughts on that.
I'm good with it.
No, yeah.
I was good with it.
Works for me.
So do we need a motion to approve it, or are you just looking for a consensus?
As long as you don't make any objections, I think we've got a consensus.
Okay, all right.
Good.
That works for you.
Perfect.
Ten minutes till your bedtime, too.
Okay.
Uh, thanks, Steven.
Thanks, Steven.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. And forgive me if I leave you now, but dinner is bleeding. I hope you all get home early.
It's already too late for that. Thanks.
May I, may I throw in one thing immediately, since I have a neighbor there? Um, I actually walk the Split Rock Trail fairly often. And that solar array is going to have quite an impact on that, the, the, let's say, the experience of, of that, that, that Pittsburgh Trail.
That's what I'm thinking.
And, and so I'd, I'd like you to take that into consideration as you think about it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, and, um, and so we, um, also need, we need to sign that forgivable loan document for the water systems study?
Real quick, um, I need one select board chair signature and then two areas where all the board members would hopefully sign it. Just as background, we were told that, uh, the state had so much, um, money kicking around for water and sewer projects that they were encouraging towns to apply, if they wanted, studies done of their water systems as kind of a roadmap for future improvements, ten or fifteen years out, on the terms that, um, while we would sign off on a loan package, we'd have no obligation to pay back any funds. So it's basically a forgiven, a loan that's to be forgiven.
I see.
Um, and so with that in mind, the Water and Sewer Commission, uh, agreed to apply for the, um, loan. It has been approved. I talked with the, uh, bond bank. They didn't feel strongly whether it should be the select board or the Water and Sewer Commission folks to sign off. They said sometimes in their experience, when the town has both, like we do, it's the select board that signs off, because they're incurring the obligation, even though there's no money to be repaid.
Gotcha, okay.
So I do have that, if you'd like me to circulate that for signatures.
Sure.
Sure.
It's, uh, sixty-nine thousand dollars. And there's a place for select board signatures and one specially for the chair, so I marked it for you.
Especially as an extra big.
That's just for the chair. The other two are for you, Joe. You can sign one of the lines there on the next pages.
John, and I think while everyone's signing, maybe we can have a brief discussion of the, uh, town's COVID response and policies?
Uh, yes. At the last meeting in line with the president and governor's guidance and encouragement of other employers other than the federal government and the state government to consider vax mandates, um, we had a discussion about it. And, uh, the board, I think, felt that I should make inquiries and learn more about what our tool belt contains in terms of tools to encourage vaccination for our staff. And we've learned from VLCT, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, that, um, we do have the right to ask our employees to tell us their vaccination status. And we do thereafter have the power to require either vaccination or a testing alternative. And I then talked to the union. They felt, yes, um, they were gonna be agnostic on the fact of whether we have the right to ask. But again, I feel comfortable based on VLCT's analysis that we do. But once we learn if someone is unvaccinated, the union has no problem with us giving them the option of getting vaccinated or submitting to periodic testing. So those are just tools in your tool belt if you want to go the next step. The next step could be as simple as asking everybody their status with a discussion of mandates to come later, if you'd like, once we learn who's who. That could be one way to go.
Question. Is that gonna involve, technically, your firefighters and your first response people are town employees being paid. They also should fall into that category when it comes to that, I believe. You certainly don't want your first response people.
When you're going out hundreds of town on brawler.
Well, they would at that point, I think.
I guess, yeah, where to draw the line. You've got boards and commissions as well.
Well, exactly. But didn't the governor just come out and just backpedal and say he's not gonna mandate it now?
I didn't hear that, so I don't know.
That's Mark Winslow. I was talking to him this morning. Do you know much?
I don't know. Because of the emergency powers, right?
That is just the one I had to sign.
Maybe that's a further, uh, question to ask VLCT is where to draw the line in terms of an employee?
Yeah.
Because I mean, if we're talking about forty firefighters and.
That was my question, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Much bigger production. I had in mind just the staff, the full and part-time staff.
And then strongly suggest to the others that they take the same course, take the same course, just a thought. They, by the, and, and by the way, the SCA and the NEA both have agreed to this mandatory masking and testing, or vaccination and testing program, uh, which was quite shocking to me that they did, they have agreed to that.
Well.
Well, in the paper today, they said cases are starting to go down again, so.
I'm on a, I'm on a commission for the state, and that, that edict from the state doesn't apply to me. Even though I'm on a commission, my wife's on a commission for the state, and it doesn't apply to her. So, but it doesn't apply to, uh, to, to, to the regular employees of the state. Both classified and non-classified, union and non-union.
I think it depends where it is. I know upstate New York was really high today. New Hampshire was extremely high today. Vermont was about two hundred and something, four desks. I mean, it's still.
Hundred and change.
Maybe it was two hundred yesterday.
Yeah, it dropped to your last day or two.
Yeah, two hundred yesterday.
We're not over yet.
No, New Hampshire was what, seven hundred and something? It's like, whoa, yeah.
For all I know, everybody that we were talking about, full-time employees.
I think, most people I believe are.
I simply don't know. We don't know.
We don't know, that's.
So maybe, maybe that's a first step, if you'd like to.
Do a questionnaire, do a, yeah, see who isn't. I don't know. I've had people ask. That's the only reason I brought it up.
But then also where, like, what would be the privacy involved?
Oh, there are provisions that say the disclosure must be kept secure.
You're right.
So I would communicate with the people on this list.
It would be a department head, I believe.
And then I would have a file and not share.
So you're the only one that would know?
Yeah, not share the information with anyone else. It's just so that we can then have a conversation with those who are not vaccinated about that option. Again, if, if that's the board's decision to, they want to take.
But then I look at what we just allowed here tonight.
Well, yeah, I was to, I was totally uncomfortable with that, but.
Well, no, it's, it's, you know, uh, because I mean, as you know, I'm not that worried about it.
Right.
But this tonight, uh, doors and windows open, get some air in here, because there was, as far as I'm concerned, too many people in too small a space.
I didn't even know that was the reason. I thought it was for comfort.
No.
Uh, no.
It's a good idea.
I said open the doors.
No, I wanted.
That's why I couldn't open that one.
Air in here, yeah. Because again, but, and I'm probably the least worried about that of anybody sitting in here. I'm really not. But there's, there's a point where it's, it's like, you know, you can, I don't know, stand out in the road and get run over by a truck versus, you know, not. And, and tonight, it seemed like we were standing in the road waiting to get by a truck.
But you have to admit that the fresh air did feel good.
Yeah, it sure did.
So we're developing a policy in the State House mandatory masking. We, we, uh, because of the type of structure of what we are, we, we can inquire on vaccinations, because everybody is their own employee. I work, I work for you guys. However, uh, we have limited, we are, our proposal is to limit people in a building by the number of chairs available. So if you put ten chairs in this room, that would be the maximum amount of people that could come in.
So that's maybe what we should do here.
Well, we did have that policy when we were in the worst days of it. We did not know that we'd get back to these worst days.
Right, right. We don't limit the square feet, but if you can sit down, you're welcome in a room. If you have to stand, you're not, you can't come up.
Yeah.
My dear.
Place our chairs the way they should be in that.
Oh, get rid of every other chair, basically.
Something, yeah, just to reduce.
I mean, tonight, obviously, we knew we were gonna have a lot of people, but now people have, hopefully, we won't have this every meeting now.
Plenty of meetings where Mr. Carlson has more information to share.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, the advantage, the advantage of having Tom Hall, you used to move down there. You don't have that option anymore.
No.
I know, because honestly, I wish our all of the meetings were this.
Town hall to the school.
Right.
All right, that's neither here nor there at nine o'clock.
No, it's not.
Move the stairs, we're coming down.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, and then, um, so the Kendall Hill Solar was.
Can I ask if the board is gonna take any action, or would you rather not take any action?
Oh, sorry, I don't want to take, I don't personally want to take any action.
I, you know, it's pretty hypocritical of us to go around and do that, given what we just allowed to happen here.
I know, I say, just for now, let it go.
For now, unless things change for the worse.
Okey dokey.
And then, so the Kendall Hill Solar, um, project was okayed by the planning commission?
Yeah, Mark Winslow said that they approved, um, both the Adams Road, um, project and Kendall Hill. You'll remember that we had had a, an audience with Jake Clark in August. And we agreed that since the, the planning commission didn't have full information and didn't have an opinion, we would hold our decision or your decision until planning commission had one. They did reach a decision at the last meeting after a further conversation with Jake Clark, and they are gonna be writing a letter of support. Now, as to both, they recognize that it's not good for all of Vermont's prime ag land to disappear, but they felt that to treat this particular application fairly in comparison with others that they've seen, they didn't have any good basis not to support or endorse the project. So they did, um, with that concern in the back of their mind.
Okay.
But isn't Kendall Hill, isn't that statewide ag, not prime ag?
I don't know.
I believe that's statewide ag, because we, that went through, uh, regional. I mean, we approved it down there.
Okay.
So, but I believe most of that is statewide. It's not prime.
Okay.
I think, if I remember correctly.
So is this at a place where we're, it's.
Yeah, it's in your, it's in your domain. If, if you'd like, you could issue a letter of support, just as the planning commission has agreed to do, and I could present one to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't remember having any issues with that prob, that one.
I don't think so.
No.
No, I mean, you're, you know, you get a quick glimpse of it, but that's about it.
Yeah.
Is that, is it on the?
On the north side. So you're coming down when it, when it starts to flatten out before you drop to the bridge. They plowed it up the other day, way over there on the right. Yeah, there's markers on it, I saw, yes. I don't know why they plowed it, but anyway. Out where the deer used to be, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Well, the deer are all dying anyway, so.
I haven't seen a deer all day.
What was that? I'm not a big fan.
We're gonna, is it be further discussion in two weeks?
Well, we.
Two weeks, we'll discuss it. It gives us some time to think about it.
Yeah, the next meeting.
Well, no, it gives, that's why I, yes.
Yeah. I'll see ya.
Yep. Third Wednesday. All right, so, yeah, we're signing the, um, Kendall Hill Solar, though?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so, um, only because, well, so I guess the only thing we really have left, other than getting back to all of our administrative stuff, was that, um, the, uh, update and the VLCT retention and, you know, recruitment and hiring of our new town manager. I have like a lot of stuff. I don't know if I want to present that now.
And maybe if you just got it today, and the rest of them have just seen it tonight.
Yeah, it's first you got it.
Well, that's, because I, I don't know if we have the timing, though. The timing's getting crunchy.
All I'm, all I'm interested in doing is, um, finalizing the two pieces, um, that I've already done, which is the town manager description and the town profile. I did those based on what contractor Rick McGuire had submitted as like a template for Mother Towns. I customized them as best I could to match Pittsburgh and its information and background. And I'd be more than happy, unless there were objections to what I wrote up, to send those along as just drafts for Rick McGuire. That might help him start moving forward on his end of things, anyway.
I know, and actually, you know, while I do have a lot, because I was like on the, on the phone with him for like an hour the other day. So I mean, I have, but I think, um, just so I can get back to him, not wait a full, you know, over two weeks to get back to him again. I'm just trying to, there were a couple of things that he asked me what we wanted to do that I wanted to check with everyone, you know what I mean? So, um, a lot of it had to do with ads. Um, you know, I did kind of tell him where our focus was, but I felt like it probably would be, wouldn't be a great idea to like not just do countrywide. How's everybody feeling about the ads?
Yeah.
I wouldn't think he'd want to go out of the region.
No, I want to go out of the region.
You want, okay, all right, so that's why I just wanna, um.
New England, anyway.
And then he was, uh, he did ask me about some of the area papers and, um, uh, other than the obvious one, you know, ones. Were there any that?
Burlington Free Press.
He said that one was, never got good responses for, for hiring.
Vermont Digger or Seven Days.
Seven Days he was gonna do, um.
The VLCT website, and then, that's picked up by all the regional websites as well. So in New Hampshire or Connecticut, they'll show that listing as well. Where else have I seen ads?
But I was, and like even, I mean, obviously the Herald, Brandon Pittsburgh reporter, but like, like that Lakes Region paper. Is that, like, I mean, are those too small?
They're kind of small, yeah, Lakes.
Even to bother with?
I would think that that's kind of the thing that he should know more than we should.
I know, I don't know where he's, like, I don't know.
He's the consultant.
He's probably asking, because he's trying to figure out how much money we want to spend on advertising.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's probably his question.
I know, and some of them, some of them weren't very expensive at all, but anyways, um, and then, um, let's see, so. Oh, he asked me if we had a residency requirement. I did not know the answer to that.
We do. Um, I think because of Kathleen who lived in Leicester.
Yeah.
The policy had been, you never need to live within twenty miles of town, or something like that.
Which makes sense, I just didn't know what our, our policy was.
You could, you could certainly change it, and this would be the time.
This is the time to change if we want, oh, yeah.
I don't know, I like the idea of residence, you know, I want somebody to be committed to Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
You know, maybe adjoining towns, something like that.
Yeah, for example, the new Proctor town manager has just bought a place in Polkney.
What?
That's not, that's not necessarily the best thing. He said he, you know, thought maybe he didn't wanna get assaulted at the local supermarket, and I felt his pain.
There is no supermarket in Proctor.
Wait, what? I don't get it. Yeah.
Residence requirements are tough because of the housing situation, uh, in, in, uh, many areas, including Rutland County. This is difficult to say this, but suitable workforce housing is di- very difficult to find, and that may be why the full-time town manag- the, the Proctor town manager.
Well, I hear John's house is for sale, so maybe we just move, move our new town manager.
I think he sold it.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Cause I think, I think that policy that the town developed for when Kathleen was, uh.
Was in a radius.
Probably a, a good.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Yeah.
A, a good policy to have.
Yeah.
So then you could, yeah, so then, then if somebody had a great candidate that will say, lives, I don't know, wanted to live in Brandon, or wanted to live in Proctor or something like that, you would rule them out.
Right.
I guess, I guess, yeah.
Up this negotiation.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, I'll write that down. All right, um, minimum requirements, cause he was taught, like, there was, you know, some of the high-end was like, you know, master's degree.
Or John's got that, he has.
In public administration.
Because they have the Williston one, and, oh, I customized it, but yeah, you'll get a lot of people who swear, oh, yeah, you want someone who has learned and trained and studied in municipal government, but I certainly didn't, and hopefully I was okay.
Wow, playing off.
That's a big opening for Dave now.
Yeah, it's nine, it's ten after nine, I will.
I certainly, I certainly don't think that's necessary, especially if you have some kind of qualifier that, you know, or, or relatable experience.
Well, that's, I, I don't think, I mean, yeah, you need to mess with, what I'm saying, but what are our, what are our, our minimum requirements?
Breathing?
Yeah, yeah, a pulse, a pulse.
Okay, let's bump them up a little higher than that.
No, but yours has got what, uh?
I, you know, I think at least a college, I think at least a college degree.
Bachelor's. College degree, yeah.
And then maybe, you know, some degree of, uh, background with administration, or, you know.
Human resources.
Human resources, I mean, we can, I'm sure he can tweak something, but once you tell him you don't need a graduate degree in masters of public administration, he can probably tweak it accordingly.
Okay, um.
Damn, I'm gonna have to back school before I get a job somewhere.
It's coming, Joe, it's coming.
Well, and I guess, so, and there's state requirements for town managers as far as like minimum pace, the pay scale, is that true? He said something to me like that on the.
No.
Okay, then we don't need to worry about that, you know? So, but we do need to come up with a salary scale, which he said should be in a fifteen to twenty percent range, high and low.
Yeah, I, I gave him all of my contracts and extensions, uh, and maybe you'll say that, yeah, you want some latitude to negotiate. Um, a lot of towns won't even publish a salary. They might research, uh, through the public press, you know, or whatever, what the current town manager's earning, just to compare notes, or look at our budget, they could probably figure it out that way.
So what would you like, we didn't tell him?
Don't we usually compare other towns, too, we usually?
Yeah, we do have a book that tells you about all the.
A book that tells you everything.
Yeah, we got a book to tell everything.
That VLCT produces every year that compares salaries and benefits of lots of different categories like town manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote that down, there's a salary survey that VLCT does.
Yeah, so Rick, Rick, Rick certainly have access to that.
Yep.
And we can base it on, you know, population size, that's a good.
We use that for employees and town managers.
Yeah, we use that quite often, I mean.
Oh, and then, so he also, um, as far as like the, uh, screening process, having a, uh, five-person committee. So, like, cause I guess it could've, eventually it'll still come down to the five of us, we would, you know what I mean? But like a screening committee where he, um, he offered up some of the scenarios, which was that, um, it would be comprised, um, of a neighboring town manager, two select board members, and then two either business people in town or employees, you know, like, I mean, he thought of like gen pop, it would be good to be maybe involved in that process.
I've seen, um, larger towns do that, I don't think that was how it was done here, it was pretty much the select board.
Yeah, we did the last, we, we've almost done that.
They gave us, I think they gave us ten finalists, and we narrowed it down to five.
We found down to five, then.
We narrowed it down to three.
Three, yeah.
Yeah.
So are you not interested in having a screening committee?
I think we should do it.
No?
Yeah, let us do it.
Okay.
The buck stops here normally.
Right. I'll x, I'll, I'll tell them.
We got the screening committee.
Okay, and then, um.
Stay there, I think you use us to get a raise.
Okay.
It can always happen.
Cause you certainly don't want an employee to wanna leave the company.
And then I, I told him we were, he gave me some options, but because of, uh, cause of COVID, um, first round of interviews remote, second round of interviews in person. Is that ever cool with everybody? Cause the options were like full, remote for both, or in person for both, or hybrid.
You probably get some good body language in person, and if there's not too many people in the room, I wouldn't see why you wouldn't ask.
Yeah, I don't, if there's the five of us and.
I think he's assuming we're gonna have like, you know, somebody's gonna apply from like Colorado or something.
Right, right.
Well.
You just said it was a big scenario.
California?
Part of Louisiana.
Colorado?
Yeah, there was.
Florida?
Florida, I remember that one.
So that's what I'm saying, so we're gonna expect people to come, like, fly out during COVID?
Well, we, we, I guess we could, we can.
Then at that point, if we like what we're looking at.
But that's what I'm saying, so remote only for the, only for that first round, and then when we, like, then we really, we had it narrowed down, then absolutely in person.
Then in person, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, all right, so.
Yeah, yeah, so the first round, sure.
And then, um, cut, would we cover travel costs?
Yes.
We did on the last round.
We did, yeah.
I think you have to.
And then do you say lodging and food, or do you just say an airfare possibly, or do you just say up to a certain amount? What did you guys do last time?
I think you brought up a certain amount.
I think it was two.
Depending on where they were from.
I don't think we reimbursed them fully, but.
I, I, I jettled it from.
I think we only had.
I mean, I can see paying for travel and maybe lodging, I'm not, we're not paying for food, they gotta eat anyway.
Right.
Well, seriously.
Yeah, no, we paid lodging.
They're home or here, they gotta eat.
And we do that for the finalists anyways.
Yeah.
No, I know, so he, like, he said it probably would be only for like three people at that point, so, um.
We did, we did travel and lodging.
Travel and lodging, I would say, yes.
So, um.
Cause they wanted to know what the best motel in Pittsburgh was.
Yeah.
Just tell me you had a guest room in your house. All right, so we'll just, we'll say, um, travel and lodging, yeah, but then, what are they, are they gonna fly first class? You don't wanna put a cap on that?
No. Normal.
Business class.
Normal trout, normal.
Business, business class.
No food, though, you get no food, no food on Pittsburgh.
No, no.
Um. All right, I think that was it of questions that like.
Did you, are, now, are we interested, we were talking with our rec director, getting some economic development, do we want somebody who's versed in that?
That's, would be nice.
Yeah, because even if, even if she hit on some of that, more the better, right?
Well, no, but she isn't, so, I mean, well, uh, I just think, yeah, that needs to be part of this. I, I think it needs to be part of it, you know, we didn't, we didn't even get that.
We didn't even get that.
With our rec director, but.
Yeah.
So that needs to be in there, too, John.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, that, now, now we're to the job description slash profile, are there any other comments other than some economic development?
Um.
Nope.
Uh, tech savvy's a plus.
Oh, yeah.
We need, that we, it would be great to have somebody who, um.
Yeah, so we didn't have to pay the barking terrier to do our website, or whatever.
The tenacious terrier.
Tenacious terrier, whatever it is, yes.
Yeah, um, grant writing, definitely, like, required.
Well, that's, that's, that's kind of a requirement.
And like, yeah, so, um, and marketing, somebody's good at marketing, right? Or can market through.
Well, economic development.
It's economic development, yeah.
All right, you're right, okay. All right, I guess that's, I guess that's it, I mean, and then you guys can all look at the stuff that was printed off, that was.
I'll get those two things to Rick tomorrow, and, um, you'll follow up with him separately about the things you're gonna report to him on.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, now I lost my, I lost my agenda, or is on the stuff here, there we go, okay. Oh, oh my God, we're, we're done with everything except for, um, all right, so we had, um, anything on the minutes of, we had three, August eighteenth, um, then the revised, um, meeting minutes of September first, and then September fifteenth. So anything on either of those three, uh?
Uh, yeah, the whole thing about Tom making a motion and me seconding it, and then the end being different, that never got changed.
On the, on the, on the.
On the revised one even?
The, not the last one, the one before, so it would've been the first one in September.
Yeah, I thought the only thing we were going to do was to add one sentence referring people to where they could learn more about what happened, uh, with the, um, bridge discussion.
No, you've still got that, given the fact that these minutes may get used in an Act two fear, fifty hearing, they need to be somewhat correct.
Well, that's completely different than what I heard, understood you said.
No, it's not, I said both.
Okay.
So you got, you got Hooker making the motion and me seconding it for executive session, and at the end, they've got me making the motion and Hooker seconding it. It can't be both ways.
Oh, the only comment I remember was you asking that there be a reference to the extended discussion.
Oh, I did that.
You can find information, so that's the only thing I did to the minutes.
No, I saw that.
Right, so you're saying I should have done something different, can you tell me what that is, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it, in the beginning, it says Tom made the motion and I seconded it, okay?
And then.
On the executive session.
Okay.
And then in the end, it's got it flip-flopped.
So it's, I made the motion.
That was, that was the very first thing I brought up.
Okay, that completely missed me, I'm sorry.
Because if these minutes go as a legal document somewhere and they see that, then you can't get that right.
Hooker then Mills.
Yeah, and then it was.
And then at toward the end of the meeting, it would be the opposite.
It should be, no.
It was the opposite.
It is the opposite, yes.
It is the opposite.
So the fir- first one is right, the second one needs to be changed.
Got it, okay. And we can sign it, cause that won't, we can sign it, cause that won't change the signature.
Well, it need to be right.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, I thought it was.
Good thing you caught it.
Well, three sets.
Here we go. Where's my stamp?
Yeah, exactly.
Anything we can keep going on?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was like, uh, falling asleep, tired. Uh, and anything on the orders?
Okay, and here they come.
He's a joke, you need a shorter name.
Wow.
Probably, I guess initially. Why the hell wouldn't that work?
John, town manager's report?
Uh, yes. Our friends at Sullivan Powers have completed their on-site inspection of our books, and they will be back with their full report for review by the select board, here you go, Joe, several sets of orders. Um, probably in January or February. On the sidewalk scoping study, our recent outreach efforts have succeeded, we've gotten now a pretty good response to our online survey. However, the survey remains open and active until Friday, October fifteenth. So if you, um, have not chimed in with your thoughts on potential sidewalk routes in town, please do so. It, you can find it at PittsburghSidewalkStudy.com. Um, the town's Veterans Day event is upcoming, it'll take place on Thursday, November eleventh, at eleven AM here at the town offices. We have music from the Lothrip School with Carol and Bruce in charge, scouts are gonna be involved. Um, we have taps coming, and Pastor Joel Tate from the Furnace Brook Wesleyan Church will officiate. Uh, I'm now looking for a keynote speaker, offers and suggestions are welcome. Um, as you know, um, Madam Chair, the town sent out eleven letters to property taxpayers who were delinquent for two or more years with balances of at least one thousand dollars, uh, in the hope for voluntary compliance. The deadline we've given for these taxpayers is October fifteenth to come up with a payment and/or acceptable plan, and, uh, after that, we'll make referrals to the town's tax sale attorney. Here is payroll, Joe.
I know, we have to go.
I'm sorry, I just need that for a second. For Kelly's benefit, fourteen thousand eight fifty-eight point nine nine, sorry. Um, on the morning of Thursday, September ninth, damage was done to several interior, uh, supports to the roof of the Depot Hill Covered Bridge. Uh, we've notified VTrans, our insurer, and they've sent, uh, their own inspector to look at the damage. Um, we also have an estimate from Daniel's Construction, uh, to do the work to repair the, um, damage, and, um, we hope to have final word from VLCT about coverage and amounts to be paid shortly. Um, shortly will also be the time that we begin thinking about the next year's budget. Um, so, um, we are sending out, uh, packets to department heads, including, uh, the Chair of this Board, um, on behalf of the Board, um, to provide us with their, um, requested, uh, budgets for, um, review by the select board at our November third meeting, which will be the first budget-related meeting. Uh, of course, thereafter, we'll have several weeks to tweak the initial, uh, requests into a budget that balances with what we think the taxpayers can bear. Um, as you know, the Dollar General construction across Plains Road has begun as of last Saturday. They expect that it'll be no longer than a total of two weeks, finishing up on or before Saturday, October sixteenth. Chad Ujara reports that they seem to be making good progress, and hopefully, it'll be for less time than we have notified you. Uh, the Pittsburgh Fire Department has had some difficulties with its new ladder trucks, some electronic problems, so warranty repairs have been performed in New Hampshire. Happily, Chief Hempel reports that the electronic issues appear to have been resolved. Uh, you'll probably also note with pleasure that the salvage yard has painted its exterior, although I've already taken the first complaint on the new color.
Oh, my gosh.
What's the new color?
It's a weird gray, it's not.
Oh, it's a weird gray?
Yeah, it's not pretty, but it's prettier than the neon yellow.
You don't even notice it anymore, I love it.
I agree, but that just goes to prove everybody's a critic.
Probably that person liked the yellow.
Yeah, well, apparently, somebody did.
I won't, I won't mention Liz Willis's name.
Oh. When I see her.
Yeah, exactly.
The nature conservancy proposal to purchase land in Florence, um, will have to wait further discussion at another time, cause Mr. Binhammer was unable to make tonight's meeting. He's hoping he can be involved in any further discussion of that proposal. Uh, the town manager will be out of the office Thursday and Friday of next week to attend his final VT CMA Town Manager Conference. Meanwhile, the town offices will be closed this coming Monday, uh, October eleventh, in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day, or if you prefer, Columbus Day.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Now, are you sure that will be your last one? Cause you might go to work for another town.
You never know.
It has happened, I, I tell people that town managers are like baseball managers, you get fired or you leave one, and then six months later, you're elsewhere, right down the road. I'm not making any promises.
Um.
But nothing would be as satisfactory as my work here with Pittsburgh, and be wonderful. David Mills only occasionally accepted.
Any select board member remarks this evening?
I do.
Oh, God, do you really?
Yes, it'll be, all right.
Surprise, surprise.
Well, hey, man, that's me, I, I'm the one that did it, anyway. Uh, I've had a complaint about mud at the transfer station, as far as backing up where you dump debris, and they sent me pictures, and it is pretty muddy. So maybe Chad could put some stone or something there on that, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
I got one.
Oh, uh-oh.
I had a complaint yesterday, uh, about some of our policing up in East Pittsburgh. I had a complaint yesterday, uh, about some of our policing up in East Pittsburgh. Don't feel they're getting enough time for slowing some speeders down on that end of town. And, uh, I said, it, apparently it's been addressed before, but kinda things have followed up.
Is that a contractual matter, where they'd like more coverage than I'm providing?
No, no, this is, this is in Pittsburgh, East Pittsburgh. When, when our cruiser goes to, it's just up at Barstow School up in that area, which doesn't affect East Pittsburgh. So I said I would bring it up, and hopefully get a little more time up there.
And, uh... That has come up on occasion in the past.
Yeah, so I said I'd see if we could rectify that a little bit.
All right.
They haven't got their siren running yet or not, but they were erecting it on Earth.
Well, well, the last thing we have on our agenda is public comment.
Yes, don't run away, good Lord.
All right, awesome.
You don't like the color, what?
What would you like, Adam?
Oh, no, okay. Soon enough, it will be white with snow, so...
There's no line in the middle.
They've been over that chip seal going up towards the Arch Bowl, where they put the chip seals.
I don't know.
That's, that looks good.
Not bad.
They painted the line first before they paved.
They wanted to get that out of the way.
It's under there somewhere, yeah.
Vtrans has reported that there's a real shortage on that line striping paint.
Oh, is that why there's so many roads, new roads that haven't been?
And that they might not be able to get to all the roads like they usually do.
I guess, did you want to talk about the, the color there? Or, no, okay, they're good.
All right.
All right, we're good.
All right, come again.
Thank you.
Now...
Appreciate it.
Come again.
Yes, come again.
Recording stopped.
Um, and to move things along, do we want to take our executive session into John's, uh...
We can.
You know, otherwise...
It's kinda late, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so that ends the open part of our meeting.